Hi, sorry about that.
Yeah, no problems. All right, it's seven oh two. We'll start the planning board meeting of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and we'll start off with doing a roll call. From what I can see, Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Mark Giddings. Linda Miller.
Here.
Sue Felshen.
Here.
And Nathan Buzz that I'm here. We know that Haley Oradell will not be joining us tonight. So the.
So Nathan, if you could just recognize that Mark waved his hand and.
Yes, Mark did wave his hand to note his attendance.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
All right, I have, sorry if I'm looking off this way. I have my other screen kind of over here, so I have some of the stuff here. All right, so the first item on the agenda for this evening is ZBA recommendation regarding Corey North Road LLC for a special permit under sections ten, eleven point six, and eleven point eight of the zoning bylaw for a PRD for six units at forty-eight Y Fitchburg Turnpike. I believe we're going to be hearing some, some new information. I think we have some reliefs or something like that that you might be sharing. So, yeah, I'm not sure which one of you is going to take, take it from there. So, okay, Chris.
I'll take it from here. Good evening, Chairman and Board members, and thank you for having us tonight. My name is Chris Clausen. I'm with Corey North Road LLC. We're the proponent applicant for this PRD tonight. I have with me Bill Henchy, our attorney. He has COVID even, and he's joining us, which is a trooper, and Matt, Matt Leidner, he's our civil engineer. So I have a very short, and I'll be direct presentation through a PowerPoint. I'll put up on the screen now. That's all right with you. Okay, so we're, we're back in front of you for this property located at forty-eight Y Fitchburg Turnpike Pike in Concord. This is an outline of the subjects I'm going to present to you very quickly. There's a couple outstanding comments I just wanted to touch on. One or two of the planning board members asked us to show you what a six lot subdivision might look like, so I added that to this PowerPoint. I wanted to expand and show you how the, these PRD homes are an extension in a, offering a diverse type of a housing product. It's an extension to the overall Sudbury project, so I have some renderings of the Sudbury home, uh, housing types that I am going to show you. There were some questions on septic. I wanted to give you an update on landscaping based upon natural resources comments, and then the public had asked us, had some questions on views of what would be seen when we build these homes. So that's a quick overview. I'll jump right into it. This is an aerial, just to give you a reference again, where forty-eight Y Fitchburg Turnpike is, it's this parcel right here. This road is Fitchburg Turnpike. This is the, the former gravel pit. So on the, I just listed a few comments here that were outstanding in the engineers, engineering department staff report, they had a reference to that if a tractor trailer truck was to navigate that when they make that swing, the, they would take up the entire road at both ends of the intersections. And, and that, that is how almost every single residential side street intersection is, having that condition. Engineer didn't raise it as a concern or anything. They just made a statement and, and we are aware of that. An update on the memorandum of understanding between the Concord Public Works and Sudbury Water District as to the town of Sudbury Water District providing water to these six homes. Just wanted to give you a quick update. Both Town Council for Concord and Council for Sudbury Water District have, and our council, Bill Henchy, have all agreed to the terms of the MOU. The Sudbury Water District, as we speak, it has a board meeting that will vote to adopt that, and that, that MOU should be finalized tonight. And then we are in front of the natural resources right now. In fact, I have a site visit scheduled with them next week, and we have a hearing, a second hearing with them on September twenty eighth, the following week. Here's a diagram per the request of a couple planning board members of what a six lot subdivision would look like for this sixteen and a half acre piece. So we, you know, had, had to meet the, the resident AA zoning, which requires at least two, I think eighty thousand square feet per lot. And so with this plan, there's, it's, it's not the prettiest plan in the world, but it's a plan. And that was a request of a couple of the board members. I wanted to touch on a concept that I introduced into the narrative for the PRD application, which this property bought the Sudbury Cold Brook Crossing Development, which has multiple housing types to it. There is, there's an affordable housing apartment project. There are age restricted condominiums that are housed in a low rise building. There's an age, there's, there's age restricted townhomes in duplex and triplex buildings. And then there's some unrestricted townhomes in duplex and triplex buildings, all within the Sudbury Cold Brook Crossing. So the PRD, and the way I look at it is it's complementing these home sites, these home resident building types by offering a single family options to the public. And I have some images of the Sudbury buildings, so you can see what those look like, and then at the end, I am going to show you what the houses look like. And then the last slide to this section is a request, we're, we're going to convert one of the duplexes from a four bedroom to a three bedroom with a lot, and I have a, a drawing that shows you how we're doing that. So this is an image of the affordable housing apartments that are hopefully receiving a certificate of occupancy this week. This is an image of the low rise, age restricted condominium building. These are images, these two images here on top left are the age restricted townhomes. And there, these are actually in a, in a triplex format. I was only able to get images of part of it. And this, this is a, over in the right hand corner is a image of the duplex that is not, does, does not have an age restriction to it. There's also a triplex version of this, but that gives you a flavor of what those look like. And then I thought it would be helpful just for me to drop on this PowerPoint what the houses that we're proposing would look like, so. We, we think we're offering a diverse product type by adding these homes to the overall Cold Brook Crossing community. This plan on the left is a, the second floor, which has the bedrooms for the duplexes and the duplex, and it has one, the mass, the owner suite here, bedroom two, three, and four. So this is a blown up, blow up version of it where we convert this bedroom four into a loft. And we accomplish that by removing the closet, removing the door into, into the bedroom. And there's a wall here that we will remove, or either keep it there, or we'll make an open railing here, so. So this will accomplish, one of the duplexes sides will be a four bedroom, the other side would be a three bedroom with this loft. This section, I just wanted to touch on septic fields. As we noted in our last meeting, all these septic fields will be designed to meet Title V and Concord Board of Health regs. And I did a, a takeoff to measure the distance from the Concord White Pond Well to, to the septic fields on the property, and I just wanted to show you that. So this is, right here is where Concord White Pond Well is. This is, this area here is where the, the duplex in the four single family homes would be located. The orange line is the Concord Zone Two outline. So let me, I might have to zoom in on this to make it easier for you to see. So right here, you can see the, the structure where the well, a Concord White Pine Well is, and I just took a, a on Google Maps and measured from there to where the duplex would be located, and the distance is a thousand seventy feet. And then I did another measurement from the same, from the, the White Pond Well over to this side, and that's what this image is here. And that, and that is one thousand six hundred and twenty feet. That was a question that was raised by the public, and I thought it would be help the board to see what those distances are. And we have updated our landscaping plans per natural resources comments. And what, in that process, we've identified all the trees within the buffer zone that would be removed. And then we've also identified the tree, how we, where we're going to replace them. NRC also asked us to update the hydroseed mix that we will be placing, and we've done that. And they've also asked us to add a tree protection program into the landscape plans, and we've done that. And I've transmitted these plans to Elizabeth, so she has them on record. And then the last area I wanted to touch on with you is, a public had asked us some questions about we're going to see these houses, you know, what's it going to look like, that kind of thing, so we, we, I, I hired the surveyor to go out and actually shoot the heights of all the trees that are on the downward side of the slope, of the slope. And then our civil engineer took that information and put a cross section through our, through the property. And this, this cross section here is, it starts from here and goes north. And so this, this would be the south, and this is heading to the left would be to the north. And the trees that are on the downside slope, which are all, all in here, this, this downside slope here are mostly pine trees. There are some hardwoods and some other, I think some hemlock trees in there. But they're, it's, they're very dense, they're very tall, they're, you know, anywhere from a hundred foot, foot on up. The next slide is a cross section from over here, similar type of a, of a barrier. And I thought that would be helpful for, not only for the, the board to see, but the public as well. And that's, that's the wrap up. So if, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them, and hopefully we addressed your, any, any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chris. I, I do have two questions. One, on the sketch that you showed of the subdivision, it made me think, what is currently on the Sudbury side of sort of what appears as kind of an island across?
So there's a, we have like a, a buffer that we're planting with trees and plants to separate the single, the, the Concord PRD from the Sudbury townhomes that are right up to the town line. So that's what that little like sausage area looks, that's what that is.
That's what will be put there with the PRD, but, but basically you're saying the, the townhomes on the Sudbury line will be right up to that, to that line?
Yes, they will, yes.
Okay. And then the other, the other, I guess this is more of a, a comment. I mean, I, I understand where you're coming from in terms of, you know, you're, you're looking at this as an entire project inclusive of the Sudbury and Concord sides. And so when you were discussing the diversity of homes, you were sort of coming at it from that perspective. But I, I, I mean, on our side, we have to look at it from, you're talking about the, just the PRD portion for Concord. And, and the diversity of homes within that, you know, segment, a lot of the homes are, you know, you, you basically have one duplex that's there, and then the rest of the homes are, give or take, pretty much the same.
Right.
And so I think we heard that a little bit last meeting, was it, there was a sense that there wasn't really too much diversity in housing. So I, I don't know if there's a way for you to address that, or if you have some thoughts or comments on that?
Well, we, we tried, I, I mean, by taking one better amount of one of the duplexes, that gives you a little bit of a, you know, a little change. You know, ha- having the duplex mixed in with the single family homes, I mean, our preference would be to do all six of the homes as single family, but we, we know that the PRD regs required us to have multiple product types. So we've, we've tried to address that as best we can, and I mean, it's only six, six properties or six, six residences, so there's not really a lot I can do. I mean, I, I'm. So Elizabeth, I mean, I, I.
This is, I mean, this is something that the board had a conversation about when for Concord Culinary Cottages. You know, that, that was only, that was only four units, and they, you know, it was, it was four separate units. It wasn't, you know, there wasn't a duplex. It's, you know, the barn got converted and the house got rehabilitated and then two additional units, so it, it does become a challenge to address diversity when you're talking about a project that is, you know, so small.
Right.
It, it was somewhat of a, a challenge even for, you know, Mill Run Commons and Riverwalk. So it's, yeah, I, I mean, it's a challenge to get, you know, a diversity in a, in a project that's so small.
Right.
And my, I'm sorry, I, I had a recollection, the, the projects, the choice to limit it to six units, that was part of the Sudbury agreement?
Yes, sir, that, so.
That was a voluntary decision by you guys to maximize the Sudbury side, right?
Uh, no, and, and I'm, I'm, we're not, we're not going to get in, we're not going to get into this conversation too much. That was all part of litigation between Sudbury and the applicant.
Okay. That's fine.
It's, it's not something that's open for conversation, I, I'm going to say. It's, that, that is, that is the limit. So it's, it's.
Well, I myself do understand that, but I think it would be helpful for the applicant not to try to convince us that the Sudbury portion adds to the diversity of the Concord portion. I understand that in the Concord portion, there are difficulties due to conditions on the ground, but I don't feel that Sudbury affects our decision as members, planning board of Concord.
No, and I, and I agree with you on that. It was not my intention to say that because of all the Sudbury stuff, we needed diversification. That was not the intention. It was just my, I was trying to paint a picture that it kind of, the, the housing types in Concord are a compliment, what we're doing in, in Sudbury. So we, we, we feel that we have met the letter of the law on the, from the PRD standpoint, on having a diverse product types with six homes. So my intention of talking about or showing you the, the images of the homes in Sudbury was just to show you how everything complements each other. That was, maybe I should be used, complement versus diversity, so.
Chris, may I? Do you mind?
Sure, yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Mister, Mister Chairman, obviously through the chair, to, to answer a quick question, because I know Elizabeth doesn't want to get into this, but the, the site is deed restricted by the town of Sudbury, who sold us the land to no more than six residential units. So it's just simply, we have no discretion there at all. But i- in terms of the diversity issue, I, I concur with the board member who just stated that the Sudbury side is, you know, strictly speaking, not relevant to that at all. I, I do want to comment perhaps on section ten point two point three of the zoning bylaw, which is a section that deals with, with this question, which requires a mix of diverse housing opportunities to be provided consisting of the following mix, the number of bedrooms available, the price or rental rates of the units, and two of the three styles of units, single family, two family, or multifamily. And I, I think to Chris's last point, within the strictures of having only six units to, to work with, you know, he's worked very hard to provide different styles of housing, different numbers of bedrooms. He removed a bedroom from one of the duplex units to, you know, add to that a little bit. And, and we do meet the mix required by the zoning bylaw. I, I understand the board is talking, you know, its own policies and its own judgments about the kind of diversity they want to promote, but I, I do want to sort of suggest that we've worked hard with the limited amount of cards we have in the deck to, to try to meet that section.
I have actually a question on that score, and as a new member of the planning board, I'm honestly not sure how this works. When one removes a bedroom by leaving the same amount of space but removing in a closet and a door, of course, the house could be modified later by restoring the wall, the door, possibly even the closet. Does that have any bearing whatsoever on PRD regulations, or is that considered irrelevant from a zoning bylaw standpoint?
So those requirements will be part of the special permit and the conditions of approval, and the deed restrictions placed on those, those units, not specifically through the special permit, as well as the Title V certificate for the onsite sewage disposal system. So they, they would not be able to, to turn that back into a bedroom.
I see. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Great. I have a question again with the PRD in terms of the open space requirements, and, and I see that, um, yes, if this was a subdivision, there's absolutely no open space. But I am not sure that with the PRD, there really is any usable open space usable either to the residents of the Concord portion, or residents of the Sudbury and Concord portion, or the residents of the town of Concord. There really isn't any open space trails, and, you know, that we would hope for in a PRD. Could you? I mean, I, I understand the topography is very challenging as well. Perhaps you could walk us through that.
I'd be happy to give you a couple of points that we're, we're, we're working with the NRC at the same concurrently with, with the planning board. And the NRC is, put their foot down, no trails, period. It's a sensitive area where the, the open spaces, and they, they do not want to have any, the public walking in that area. So we've, we've agreed to that. And that there won't be no, no trails, and there'll be a deed restriction in our condominium documents to that effect.
So in terms of any kind of landscaping or appearance, in terms of the that you can add any, I don't know, any benefit in terms of that community?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So the, so this piece of land, it was a mine, so it's almost, where we're building the, we're proposing to build the homes, it's almost void of, of trees. I, I think our landscape plan, we have upwards of seven hundred, maybe more than that, trees that we're planning to re-populate the, the property because it's barren.
So all of the, all of the the trees that you showed us in the schematic with the, the heights.
Right.
Those are not a portion of the property.
Correct. Those are on the, those are on the downside slope past our limit of works. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Chris, do you have a, a current landscaping view of, of what's planned? Or what, or what we have? I think we had one from the last meeting, right? And it hasn't changed?
Well, we updated it per NRC's. They, they had us add more, more trees. We, we in the buffer zone, they have jurisdiction over that area, so we, we actually identified every tree, similar to the tree bylaw in the town of Concord. They, they had us measure every tree, identify every species of tree, identify which trees would be taken down and which, how we are going to replant, and, and there's a mitigation. We need to do that on a one to one ratio, which we've, which we've satisfied. And then, and I think beyond that, I think we're planting, you know, literally hundreds of trees. So, yes, you, you have the, I, I transmitted the updated plan to Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Another question that we had, and, and you did provide some answer to that, is the, the solar ready component, and I, and I, and so I do see that all of the homes do have a southern exposure. And you say they have between seven hundred square feet to a thousand square feet of roof that would be available for solar panels, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So in, in terms of the economics of, of, of the potential home, to the potential homeowner, can you sort of walk us through, you know, what, if, if you have any, you know, just thoughts on, are, are they likely, given the exposure and the area involved?
And before you answer, can I add on to that to say, do you know the total roof area of southern exposed roof? Like what, what approximate percentage of the southern exposed roof is available to solar?
So I, the second question, I don't know the answer to that. The, the first question, though, you know, we, we want to make these houses ready for solar from day one. So if the first person who buys a home elects not to install solar, the house will still be ready for solar for someone, the next owner of the, of the, of the home. So as to speculating on, you know, how many, if all, or one of these purchasers will install solar, I know it's I mean, it, it seems to be the trend. People are going down with EV vehicles and solar power and, you know, renewable energy. So, but for me to speculate on how many will install it, I, I, I would be, just, it would be a guess at this point.
That you have a lot more expertise than we do. Have you, you obviously have other developments that are similar? Is, is there any sort of just your, your own experience of?
And I thought the que- I thought the question was about economic viability, not whether people actually would or not, because people could always choose not to install our solar, even though it's a good deal.
Right, and, and I think, I mean, Concord Municipal Light and Power is rates are, I think about half of whatever source charges, so they're really, really good rates. But having said that, you know, they're only going up, they're not going down. So I think the economics question is a real, a good question. I just, I'm not, I, I'm probably the wrong person. I don't have the data to, to tell you. I can tell you that, me personally, I like solar. If I was in a byline, I'd put solar on it, but that's my, my personal, me personally, so.
Chris, can I ask you, for this development or other developments that you've done, do you help facilitate? Do you help facilitate the installation of solar for your? Uh for those homes or is that completely up to the the buyer?
So so we as a a development entity would not install the solar panels themselves. There's there's a but. To what you're talking about facilitating. I think um if you're a new home purchaser, you we when we're selling the home. Would like, we're we're offering a service, uh so we're gonna try and help them uh and I wouldn't. I think we would do the some diligence work and maybe provide. Local companies that are in that business, uh the the names and context. So the uh homeowner could interview them and make their own decision. Uh but we're we're not going to be doing installing the actual solar panels themselves, so.
And then the second question I have is, I think in the prior uh meeting, one of the prior meetings that we had about this, we talked about having uh. The garages ready for at least one, preferably two uh uh charge ports. You know, basically the two forty, you know, NEMA fourteen fifty outlets or something like that available.
Right. And I I think I think we said that we would offer that as a to every single home homeowner um.
Uh offer that or it would be built into as as just a matter of course of construction?
Trying to remember what I said.
I could tell you what our preference would be.
I know I know what your preference is, but you know, we're we're uh it's a kind of a fine line uh. I mean, I I we when we're selling it, if somebody wants five of them, we'll put five of them. Uh but if if they don't want it, I don't want to be having to absorb that expense if if the homeowner doesn't want it. So um. I I just, I think what I think I said we're gonna offer it. I can't uh Elizabeth, do you remember uh? You don't remember? Okay. I just don't remember either. I'm sorry. I I can I can uh look that up and and follow up with a a note to. Elizabeth. But I know from our standpoint, we're watching every dollar. I mean, as everybody knows, costs have been going up, up, up. And uh if we can not have an expense. We we don't mind spending the money if people want it and it's part of it, but to have an expense that somebody doesn't want, we'd rather not. Incur that cost. That's why we'd like to offer it.
I have a couple of questions. Um first, just to confirm, am I correct that you have chosen? Not to modify the roof lines, not to simplify them in order to allow for in order to provide larger areas for solar? You're going with the roof lines you showed us earlier? And my second question, uh I was confused by something in Mr. Henshaw's letter saying that. Uh there is no problem with um the white pond wells because they are uphill. Of your property and therefore there will be no infiltration since water doesn't flow uphill. But on the other hand, um the letter mentions pumping conditions and. A siphon effect is one thing that can cause water to flow uphill. Now. Elizabeth, maybe I should direct this question to you. Can we trust that our engineering department will be on top of that if it's an issue or? Contrarywise, the mere fact that it's outside of zone two is already evidence that it's not an issue?
I I I can, I can answer some of that, uh Elizabeth, uh unless you.
So um so to um to your question, Sue. Um first off, yes, it's outside the zone two. Um and after speaking with the um Public Works Director, who was the water. Um and sewer superintendent for thirty something years, um he has not expressed any concern with. The town's well um and these six onsite sewage disposal systems.
Very good.
Okay, so that that's consistent with what I was gonna say. So, thank you.
Elizabeth, does that? Um include the Sudbury well, which is not being used now?
Um so the Sudbury well is 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 not active. Um and um that that's the Sudbury Water District is. Um probably maybe two hundred feet from. Um from these onsite sewage disposal systems and speaking with the Sudbury Water District Director, he has not. Um expressed any concern with these six onsite sewage disposal systems.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from uh board members? If not.
Then if you want, so um again, my apologies to the board and the applicant for. Um not having my report completed, but I can um give an update um at this point in time. Um the Engineering Division um. Health Division and Fire Department uh do not have any outstanding issues or concerns. Um and um I'll be working with both of them to. Should the board move forward with um any type of positive recommendation? Um developing conditions, recommended conditions. Um the applicant, I'm still working with the Concord Municipal Light Plant. Uh while they don't have any issues and concerns with the project and extending power to the site. Developing recommended conditions is just taking a little bit longer for them to um work. Work this out since it does need to go um into Sudbury to get to the site, so that's just taking a little bit more time. Um the Natural Resources Commission is um working through their process uh and their jurisdiction to provide their recommendation. To the Board of Appeals. The Building Department uh did not have any uh issues and concerns with the project. Uh they will have recommended conditions to ensure that the height of the structures um meets the. Requirement as the applicant is requesting a waiver for the height. Uh not because the structures are higher than thirty five feet, it has to do with. Uh how height is measured in the zoning by law and going from existing grade. Um so when you go from existing grade for a site that's been mined, um you have this um. Exaggerated height elevation uh that's not consistent with the site being restored and. The houses being built, the houses are not above um thirty five feet. So they will, he will have uh conditions regarding that and ensuring the heights of the structures. And who am I forgetting um? Uh Police Department, the Community Safety Officer does not have any um. Issues and concerns other than our standard uh recommendation regarding um construction safety and sequencing and how. Construction will move on the site should the board move forward and. I think, I think that's it.
Thank you.
With that, uh I guess we can take any public comment or question on this. I don't see any. Uh if you're trying to, please use the raise hand function and then we'll call on you uh to unmute yourself.
Oh, no, I don't know.
Yeah, I see Scott's iPhone. I assume that is iPhone is not your last name, but. God, if you can unmute yourself, uh please uh share your name and uh address, please.
I'm Scott Richardson, two sixty Elsinore Street. So um the applicant said seven hundred trees at one point are gonna be playing planted. I assume that's including the Sudbury development, correct?
No, that's uh trees that we'll be planting throughout uh well. Should I address the 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 chair or should I?
You you can continue to answer that. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh so if if the we spell out on the actual landscape plan, the type of tree, the um. The quantity of trees and where they're located. So I can uh make it easy. Uh and do a a little table and then submit that to Elizabeth for you.
So that's seven hundred trees on the cover on the six conquered lots, is that correct?
It's be on the conquered property, we're we're it's almost void of trees. It was mined, it was a.
I understand, I understand, I understand that. So you're saying you're planting seven hundred trees on the conquered six lots, is that correct?
There there you go, uh whatever, put that up there, so.
I think you're saying they'll all be on the conquered side, but not necessarily on the lots themselves, and this is a source of the confusion.
Right, there, yeah, they're they're all throughout the um. Areas that we will be where that where the cursor is, all all that, and then around the houses as well.
Great, I'm sorry. And and what's and what's the quantity of trees that you're planting, please, within the conquered property?
I I can't uh. List that off my the top of my head. There's a table that identifies the tree types. The quantity of trees and then you relate that to the landscape plan and where they will be planted.
Great, no problem, cuz you cuz you said seven hundred, that was all, I just wanted.
That's off the top of my head, so.
Got it. Okay, so I I hope the board, you know, gets the actual number on that. And then and then the second thing is.
For any landscaping on Sudbury when you give that number, that's.
Yeah, there's no, that's does not, that excludes Sudbury, you're right, Bill.
Good, thanks.
That was me. I I think the gentleman was. Never mind, I don't want to interrupt, go ahead.
Thanks. And again, what's the average size square foot of these homes again, of the six homes, please?
I I don't recall at the top of my head, I'm sorry, uh Scott. Um there they range, uh there are four bedrooms, I know that. The single family homes, one of the duplexes is four bedrooms or one of the duplexes is three bedrooms. Um I want to say the first living level of the single family homes is around. Fifteen to eighteen hundred square feet, maybe two thousand square feet. And then the second living level on the single family homes is uh smaller, but uh you know. You know, comparable in size.
I think it would be useful for the board to know the exact size of each house when you when you get a chance.
And that information, Scott, has been filed with the the board and.
We do have that, I think. Maybe not with, I haven't seen the one with the uh. Uh the reduced to a three bedroom one, but I know we've we have had that previously, so I.
That's in the previous report.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, that's it.
Right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Suzanne Foley, I see uh you have your hand on up, please uh unmute yourself and oh and you disappeared.
Hi there, I'm trying to unmute.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I want to know of the buildings.
Oh, yes, please introduce yourself, name and uh address.
I'm Suzanne Foley, I live at two thirty five Sudbury Road in Concord. And my question is, of the homeset of your building, how many of them are for affordable housing? And or duplexes, um how many of them are going to help support um people who live in Concord continuing to live here?
So the PRD for the quantity of homes that we are uh proposing here does not require us to. Uh offer affordable housing, uh so that's not part of this uh zoning by law. So zero.
That's unfortunate, isn't it?
Well, we're. Uh we're we're proponents of affordable housing, we're building quite a few of them just over the town line, so.
Where are you building them over the town line?
Yeah, in Sudbury.
Okay, well, it's disappointing that six new, six homes are coming into this fragile area. And none of them are duplexes that are going to be affordable, and yet we're going to put in sixty five condos into the Thero Depot area.
Yes, and I I'm not not I'm not part of the Thero uh project.
Uh it's not you. Thank you so much for listening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
For the record, there are no, there are not, there are no plans involved for any Thero Depot development at this point in time.
Okay.
There any other uh public comments, questions? Not seeing any. Hands up, we just looked through. Yes, I don't see any others, so I think I think that is it. Um thank you very much, Chris. Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
So at this point, um Nathan, what I'd probably like to propose is. Um that the board continue this out for two weeks. Um I will. I will promise um as best I can, but um update the. The um staff report, um there are specific sections in the PRD by law that require the planning board to. Um make as part of their recommendation, so the board could um discuss those sections uh in two weeks. Um I also think I will be able to finalize uh some of the uh comments from the. Other divisions and the departments um and incorporate that into a revised report. For the board to discuss at the next meeting.
Yeah, can I just add, can we can we make sure that anything that uh comes from the, you know. Future NRC interaction in terms of any changes to landscaping laws, that we make sure we have that available to us. Uh before the next meeting, just so we can look at it.
Yep, so that'll be posted to the um. Uh the Board of Appeals' current documents page, along with um you know, everything else that has been posted. So once um. I receive confirmation from the National Resources Director, um they're moving forward with um. You know, with no further revisions to that plan. Um then that can be submitted, um but the the current plan that's before the NRC that can, I'll have that posted. For the board tomorrow.
Fantastic, thank you. Alright, so we'll continue this to the Plan Board Meeting of September twenty seventh. At seven PM.
We need a motion.
Uh we need a motion for that.
No, because this is only a recommendation, it's not a public hearing. Um there, no motion is required.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Alright, now I can't get to my uh.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Good evening, good evening.
Thank you all.
Hope you're feeling better.
Yes, feel better.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, on to the next, which is another ZBA recommendation for. Did somebody say something? Sorry. Uh for Concord Academy for a special permit with site planner view under section six point two point eleven, seven point two, seven point, seven point two. Many. I'm not gonna read all of them. To construct a Centennial Arts Center relocated and rehabilitate two existing dwellings on two twenty Main Street. And Ides and Ides College Cottage, not college. Convert existing uh attached garage at two thirty eight Main Street into a dwelling unit and other associated site improvements at one sixty six Main Street. Alright, so a lot going on at Concord Academy. Uh who is going to be from Concord Academy is gonna be leading this off. Alright, Don.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh my name is Don Kingman. Live at one sixty six Main Street, Concord, Mass, and I represent Concord Academy. Um I wanted like to give you an overview of the project and then talk with our. Design folks that we have on board to talk about the site, the landscape and the architecture, and then open it up with some questions. And possibly some answers that you may have on what we're doing. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman, from that approach?
Yes, please, continue.
So just as a general overview, uh this is CA's one hundredth birthday, it's our centennial. Um and we want to celebrate this, and this has been something long into works to look at a new performing arts center. We're known for our performing arts. Um and I'll talk a little bit about the existing facility there. We want to capitalize that on that. Um as you probably know, we're boarded by the Sudbury River. On the south side or the north side, sorry, uh and then Main Street on the south. So we're a fairly tight campus. Uh people have used to describe Concord Academy as. A place that is measured in square inches versus square footage as other campuses do. Um we've looked at a lot of options, uh but when you start putting the resource areas in, we're really limited in what we can do. And so we feel like what we're presenting to you is our best option as we move forward. Um we'd like to unify our campus. This campus was. Constructed through, you know, residential homes that were built two hundred plus years ago. And we've created this fabric of a a community of a campus here. We want to try to reach a little further. And help that community out by being very intentional with what we do. Sustainability is part of our mission, uh the green of the campus. Sustainability is part of our mission. Uh, the green of the campus is important to us. Um, we're going to talk a little bit about no fossil fuels for this project, uh, PV array, uh, green space, a meadow, a commons, a garden, a lawn, and I'll talk about impervious reductions that we have overall to our campus. You know, why are we doing this? Our existing, what we call the PAC, the Performing Arts Center is really not too sophisticated, but it is what it is. Um, it was built in the sixties, uh, as a gym, it's an auditorium. It, it was when a school is much smaller. It doesn't have the sightlines, the acoustics, the backroom stage for what we use right now as a full main stage theater production. So it's a long time in coming. And so our current position right now is we're about four hundred students. And by virtue of this, we see no, by virtue of this project, as you say, we see no FTE increase relative to students and towards our adults. This project that we're going to talk about in a minute is about probably thirty to forty percent of our Main Street campus, if you will, on the, uh, the north side of, of Main Street, we're going to try to be a little more intentional about circulation, separate our vehicles from our pedestrians. And so we're going to talk about a new entrance, uh, and parking. We want to recycle three buildings. We want to actually pick them up and move them and reposition, reposition those and then take a third building. It has a, uh, oversized two-story, two-car garage and repurpose that into faculty housing. The centerpiece of what we're talking about is a Centennial Arts Center. Um, it's about thirty-seven thousand five hundred square feet, give or take, uh, in that range. And within that building is going to be a hundred seventy-five seat playhouse. Call that the theater, if you will, a much smaller than our four hundred seat auditorium that we use currently. We also want to have a recital hall, music recital hall in this building. We would have seats for about a hundred and twenty-five. And then this new idea that we have, we've come up with P three, which is a process, a production and presentation lab. Uh, think about a black box. It's a white box tricked out with technology, et cetera. Um, that'll be also part of this. In order to do this, we want to create an academy village. So, uh, four years ago, four years ago, we acquired, uh, some property adjacent to the campus. And we want to try to capitalize on that and create an academy village by moving two of these faculty residences over to the western edge of the campus. Um, and we've had a number of outreaches with the community. We have, uh, spoken numerous times to our butters. We've had a neighborhood meeting. Um, and we continue to have that dialogue with folks as we, as we go through this process. The overall timeline for this process is we have received historic district approval. On the process, we're in the middle of a NRC conversation. Uh, the first meeting, I think, went well. They're looking for some more information and calculations and we're working on that. We're here before you with the planning board and we expect to be going through ZBA. From an overall timeframe, I would say we would look at this to be in the spring of twenty-three. So let's call it six months from now from a ballpark special perspective, this will take about twenty-five or this take about two years, sorry, uh, to complete. So let's, we'll be complete somewhere in the spring of two thousand and twenty-five. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to Sean Malone from Oak Engineering, who will talk about the site elements and then he'll have, pass it off to, uh, JP from our landscape architects. And then finally, we'll finish up with DSK Architects, who will talk about the interior of the building and the exterior. Uh, Sean, I'm going to turn it over to you for right now.
All right. Great. Thanks, Sean. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, again, for the record, my name is Sean Malone with Oak Consulting Group. I am the civil engineer for the project. And if I may, Elizabeth, can I share my screen? Okay. All right. You all should, uh, see my screen. Uh, this is the existing conditions plan of the Concord Academy, uh, main campus on Main Street. Uh, so I'll just quickly walk you through this in the area that we're looking at and then get a little bit more into the, uh, proposed site plan. Um, so again, this, the Concord Academy, uh, main campus, we'll be talking about this area over here. And this is what, uh, we refer to as West Campus. Uh, so that's pretty much bounded by the Academy Garden, the chapel, and then this, uh, western property boundary, and then the area behind Bailey's Common. And then this is the head house. Two buildings I want to point out here that, uh, Dawn had alluded to, uh, the Ides Cottage is located here, kind of in the middle of the campus. And two twenty, um, Main Street, but we refer to as two twenty is located here just to, uh, the west of this large parking area. This used to be a tennis court that had been converted into a, a parking area. And then the other building that, uh, Don was referring to was two thirty-eight Main Street down here. This is a building, single family residence that has the, uh, oversized garage, um, that will be coming in part of the project. Uh, currently coming into, um, West Campus through the West Gate next to the Phelps Building. Uh, you enter into a kind of rather inefficient parking area and a little bit haphazardly, uh, put together, I think, is done and mentioned with the buildings just over time. Add a little bit here, add a little bit here, um, add this back here. Um, so it really creates a, uh, inefficient both in circulation as well as the use of impervious area. Um, and with this campus location right on the Sudbury River, we're right up against the two hundred foot riverfront area. We have, um, one hundred year floodplain that snakes all through this area. Um, so the campus is rather limited in, uh, the area that can be used for, uh, design and enhancement of their, their school. Um, right now, the, um, parking areas are, uh, generally just shed to a couple catch basins at some, uh, low point locations and then just drain out into a, uh, grassed area that go down into these athletic fields. There's two athletics fields here that are load. So the storm water right now just pretty much flows uncontrolled out of this area and out to the fields and then down to the river. Um, I did, uh, five test pits out here with, uh, Justin from Concord Engineering this spring. And as we found with other explorations on, on this site, the, the soils are pre, pretty much fine sands, uh, underneath the loam with the groundwater in the eighteen to nineteen, uh, elevation range. So they're pretty, pretty typical of what we've found on, um, this campus previously. Now, jumping into the proposed plan. So as you can see, we removed this, uh, parking area kind of in the, the heart of the campus and replaced it with the, the new CAC building, the Centennial Arts Center. Um, and then Ides Cottage, which was previously about this location, has been relocated uh, along this western boundary. And here's two twenty, which was in this area, uh, located next to Ides. And then this is two thirty-eight with this garage being converted into a faculty residence. Um, so this kind of creates the, 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 the corner of the campus along this west boundary, really, um, kind of shoehorning everything or, or kind of shifting everything to the inside of the campus. Um, the, the necessity of this conversion of, um, two thirty-eight to have a faculty residence in that garage is two twenty, which is currently three residents is going to be, uh, reduced down to two. There's currently a basement residence that would no longer be in this building. So, uh, the net effect is, um, no change in the faculty housing on campus. We'll also be, um, kind of reorienting this former West Gate to just be a, um, smaller parking lot with access to the head's house. And then relocating the West Gate to the far west side of the campus where the existing driveway to two thirty-eight is. Um, this will be, uh, reconstructed and upgraded to be a full service drive to, um, get to the parking lot for the, the CAC. We've designed all this, um, to accommodate both, uh, any loading vehicles, delivery vehicles necessary, as well as the, uh, the fire department. And we have submitted the auto turn sketches on the turning movements for the fire department. And also with the fire department, we met with them a couple of times and access is, uh, very important to them. I'm going to jump to this plan to show a couple of things. What we've, uh, what, what their concerns were, were to provide access behind Bailey's Common and Phelps Building, uh, as well as behind the new CAC building and the Academy Village. So what we've designed in here is some areas where we're going to use reinforced or, uh, grass paved systems so we can minimize the amount of uh, by two minutes pavement to just what's necessary for the walkway, but still have an additional area to, to provide a, a twenty-foot wide, uh, fire department access, this location around the back here and around this area to enter Academy Village. And these will all be maintained with the campus operations and maintenance plan. Um, I think Dawn had mentioned to the fire department, he has a, a, a brush truck that they can go and sweep these off. So, um, to protect them and, and, and keep them accessible. So overall, with this, uh, more kind of consolidated and inefficient parking scheme, we're actually reducing the amount of, uh, pavement, asphalt pavement and gravel, gravel parking areas and drives by approximately twenty-three thousand six hundred and fifty feet, so more than half an acre. The CAC building will add about twenty-two thousand square feet of roof area to the site. But we'll have a net reduction of about fifteen hundred square feet of, uh, impervious area. And again, I think it is important to note that a majority that that half an acre of parking area in, in uncontrolled, um, stormwater from those areas is being removed in favor of, uh, roof area. We'll be constructing the site predominantly in areas developed with, uh, parking, uh, in the tennis court that was over here. We will have some additional work that goes beyond that limit within the riverfront area and in the floodplain. And we have designed this to provide compensatory storage for that floodplain fill so that we, uh, will meet the, um, fill requirements for one foot intervals as well as one and a half times the total amount of fill is provided in compensatory storage per the, uh, town regulations. Um, as Don mentioned, we are talking with the NRC and, and, in, um, public hearing with them on, for the work in here. And I think one of the big aspects of this project as well, and, and JP will talk a little bit more about this, is this meadow area back here. This currently is a athletic field that will be taken out of service and renaturalized and, uh, preserved as a, uh, as a meadow. Overall, with stormwater, uh, we will be providing a, a stormwater system using subsurface infiltration, uh, stormwater quality units, surface wet swells, as well as pervious pavement, uh, over in this area. We'll be reducing the, uh, both the rate and the volume of flow from the site to the Sudbury River as well as Main Street. There's a small amount that goes to Main Street now, so we'll be, uh, lessening that as well. Um, I have been discussing the, uh, the stormwater with Justin at, at Concord Engineering. He issued a letter, uh, we got last week. So, um, I met with him today and, uh, know what we have to do. And, uh, we're on the same page there. So we'll be revising our plans and updating our calculations and get those back into them. Um, so he can complete his review. Uh, with that, I will, uh, turn it over to JP to talk about the landscape site.
Great. Um, can I share my screen as well? Uh, good evening. But yes, my name is JP Charbonneau. I am the landscape architect on the project with Crowley Cottrell. As far as the landscape is concerned, we think this project has, will have tremendous benefits for both the campus and for the ecology of the site. Um, this plan, can you all see my screen right now? This plan, uh, is the existing conditions and the western portion of Concord Academy is currently defined by, uh, its existing large parking lots and tennis courts and their associated screening vegetation. Uh, and, and also their tall chain link fences, which effectively divide or cut off this portion of campus from the rest of campus. To show the proposed plan, which Sean also showed, um, in its place, we are posing a new, um, large wildflower meadow, which will naturalize and introduce more biodiversity into an existing athletic field. A small cluster of relocated faculty housing buildings, which we are calling the Academy Village, and other campus landscapes, uh, for gatherings and, and, uh, pedestrian circulation, such as the West Lawn and Academy Garden. As far as the landscape character of these spaces, uh, the West Lawn between the historic buildings on Main Street and New Performing Arts Center will primarily be a campus landscape with lawns and trees to allow students and faculty more spaces for hanging out and pedestrian circulation. The Academy Garden will be a more formally defined gathering space for graduations and outdoor cer, and other outdoor ceremonies, which will improve activities already held there. And Academy Village will have a more domestic character for faculty and their, and their families. Um, other improvements include addition, additional pedestrian scale and campus standard pole lights, uh, which will, uh, primarily be lined along the major pedestrian paths and two, uh, twenty-foot tall pole lights to light, uh, the parking area for the new building. All light fixtures will be LED and dark sky compliant. Um, renderings and sections for these spaces have been provided in the package and, and I won't go into that, uh, in this discussion, but happy to do so if, if, uh, the question arises. Uh, but to conclude, um, in addition to the nor, enormous benefit, the new performing arts center building will be to Concord Academy. We think this proposal for the landscape will not only have greater ecological value, um, but we also believe it will stitch the campus together east to west and reconnect it to the river. And with that, uh, that concludes my portion of this talk. And I'll turn it over to DSK. We'll go over the building.
One second, before we move on from that, can, can we, can you share that, uh, screen, uh, one more time real quick?
Sure, of course.
Question. And one of the things that we're looking at there. Um, what is to the left of the parking lot? So sort of between the parking lot and
Here.
Academy, yeah, the Academy Village Common. Where does that hatch?
So the, this is the parking area for the faculty buildings.
Okay.
And this is primarily will be pervious paving, um, to increase the amount of pervious surfaces on, on the campus.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Um, Elizabeth, if you could, uh, allow me to share my screen as well, there may be two of me on here. So it would be the Courtney Valley at DSK.
I was muted too. Elizabeth, you were muted when you said, said whatever you said.
You all should be able to share your screens. Is that not coming up, Courtney? Oh, there you go.
All right. Uh, good evening, everybody. This is David Chase from DSA Architects. I'm going to walk you through the floor plans and then I will turn it over to Courtney and she will walk you through the, um, elevation. So what you're seeing here on the screen is a basic plan. Um, on the southwest corner, we carved out a small area, a small quadrant for theater support space. That's what you see here is, um, dressing rooms, uh, theater storage, a green room, uh, makeup area, food bathrooms and, um, uh, uh, costume and pop storage. Um, so this is in the, in the floodplain and we are proposing a robust water pumping system to keep the water from coming up. Let's there. On the first floor, um, on the top of your screen is the Sudbury Riverside. To the bottom is Main Street. Okay. To the left is the parking area and to the right, we have the Academy Garden and the chapel. Okay. There's three main components to, uh, three main program components to this plan. One is the main. One is the main theater, you see in the top left corner. To the right of that is the music hall and to the center is P three, which is process, presentation, performance. But those are the kind of three main rocks that. That make up this program. We have a west to east main access which stitches these main components together. And then halfway through is a north to south access, which controls the north deck. Okay. Welcome from the main theater. Next to that is the scene shop, okay? And that will have a large overhead door which will take deliveries and supplies for the scene and theater shop area. To the right of the scene shop is P three, as Don mentioned, that's process, presentation and production. What it is is a. A two and a half story white blocks and they'll be used for. Production, it'll be useful, art area, it has a few different uses, okay? To the right of that is a control room and a digital arts lab and to the side of that is a. Music chamber suite which has offices, individual practice rooms and support space. As you go to the top of the screen, to the right is the musical and a few. Thank you, a few storage support spaces, okay? I think go upstairs. You can see this is, you see the X is that's a white space, so again, to the top left is the theater which is a. Two and a half story space, there's a mezzanine, there's catwalk, there's a flexible theater with retractable seating, okay? To the right, you can double story space for the music. Music hall, yeah, thank you. And then we have some medium chamber rooms. To the side of that and then down to the bottom, we have kind of a fourth main program element called the art ensemble room. And that's another two and a half story space, which has an occupancy of about forty-nine people. We've got one more. And third floor is just a mechanical space. And you can see the catwalks on the mains, yep, there you go, on the theater. So the roof plan, we're proposing to have a PD system. Over the theater and some on the musical side of, we have about a hundred and three KW. Which is still in progress. And we also have some mechanical equipment, so we're proposing that all mechanical equipment is not on the landscape that we're going to bring it up. And place it on the roof, so it's out of view from Main Street and. Taking away any type of ugly mechanical equipment that you may see and put it on the roof. You can see there, right there in the center of the bridge line, where P three is, there's a kupla. And that is a mechanical kupla, there'll be no lights. No windows that go into that kupla. Okay, so that's the floor plan. Then I handed it over to Courtney and she can walk you through the elevation. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. The one on the top here is the south elevation. This is the elevation that faces Main Street. As Dave discussed, this main gable here is for P three, that space with that kupla above. And otherwise, we have really a kind of long gabled forum here on the front that's really fitting into the current fabric of the CA campus. Down here, we have the east elevation. This is the side that faces Academy Garden. This is the kind of end gable of this south bar here. Over here is the music hall. And between them is kind of the connection between the these two spaces. This is where our kind of lobby space is in here. All of the materials here are kind of already found on the CA campus. We have clapboards. We will have a board and button and a barn-like structure over here. But otherwise, windows, kind of all the detailing is all kind of similar to what is on the CA campus currently. At the top here is the north elevation. This is the elevation that faces the river. Here, this is the music hall on the left and on the right is the theater. And in between again is that kind of common connecting space. Down here is the west elevation. This is the elevation that faces the parking lot. On the left here, we have the back end, the kind of end stage of the theater. And on the right, we have the. The scene shop here and then again the connection between the two. On all these elevations, we are showing the thirty-five feet from the average grade on each side. We do have quite a bit of grade as you can see from this side from Main Street. Down towards the river, which is creating a taller elevation here on the north side as you look at that. These are a couple of site sections through the space so that you can kind of see what that means in context of Comfort Academy. At the top here, this is an east-west section that cuts through campus and looks towards the river. And so you can see from here, the kind of ridge line of the Centennial Arts Center is similar to that of what you're seeing over at the middle school building. And the science building that is already on campus. The lower section here goes from Main Street towards the river and kind of looks west. So here is Main Street. This is Haynes, Hopson or Bailey Commons, the existing kind of two-stork houses that are located here. And just behind that, you can see the Centennial Arts Center and where it's kind of ridge lines line up here. And we are also seeing the chapel in this particular view. So again, you can see that kind of grade dropping off. From Main Street down towards the river in this section. We do have quite a few views in here. I won't get into these in particular unless you want me to go through one in particular. But we do have quite a few views showing you kind of what this will look like with and without trees, particularly from Main Street. But I do want to point out the kind of bird's eye view, which we did get a drone shot of this today, which you can see how much pavement. Is in the campus, this kind of center here. And where, how it will look today with the CAC here in the middle. I do have information on the Academy Village buildings. I think we can jump back to those if there are any questions. But I did want to touch on the parking really quick while while we're kind of going through this. So I'm just going to go ahead and pull up some diagrams on the parking. And so in the, we did send you guys an updated revision to the parking, which includes some tables in it. And I believe there may be an additional one coming out after discussion that happened earlier today. But what I wanted to note in this is that we have existing two hundred and four spaces on campus. And let me actually, sorry, this was, or just a little bit, so two hundred and four spaces on campus. That's shown in this kind of light orange. Here that you can see, so there's some over here on this side as well as quite a bit concentrated over in West Campus. And so what we are asking for is the same two hundred and four spaces. On campus, but we are technically requesting relief from the actual zoning. And that's basically historically, we have been given relief. And that's based on kind of boarding students are not allowed to have drive vehicles on campus or have vehicles on campus. And the residences are also faculty, so we're trying not to double count. Faculty and staff that live on campus. So in nineteen ninety, we were given relief of ninety parking spaces. And again, in nineteen ninety-eight, we were given relief of a hundred and seven parking spaces. So that's not cumulative. That is initial seventeen spaces that we were given in nineteen ninety-eight. And today we are requesting relief for a hundred and seventeen spaces, so ten more spaces from the original relief given in nineteen ninety-eight. In addition to that relief, we are also looking at some alternate ways. To provide those spaces, those parking spaces. And the approach that we're looking at right now is using some of the spaces that are existing on Main Street to provide this. So what you can see here is that there are a total of, sorry, I'm going to flip back one more. There are total from here, right here from Sudbury Road. To Nishak, there are a hundred and fourteen lined kind of parallel parking spaces existing on Main Street today. And what we are asking for is to use. Essentially fifty-seven of those spaces to count towards our two hundred and four spaces. That we need. And that's primarily because after doing a kind of study of what was available during the day on Main Street. Which is in the packets that were given to you. You know, there is availability on that on Main Street. And so what we are trying to do in this is kind of prevent paving more of this campus. Than is needed and removing more vegetation and more trees. And so you can see here with our new plan on campus, existing will keep seventy-one spaces. New on campus will be seventy-six spaces and on Main Street, we're looking for fifty-seven spaces. And that is plus or minus six trees removed for the Phelps lot. We do have a reserve parking areas allocated should the plan to use kind of Main Street spaces. Prove to be challenging in the future. We do have some allocated spaces that will accommodate all of those spaces on campus. And I'm going to turn it over for any closing comments with that or questions.
I think that concludes our presentation. I think we open it up to Mr. Chairman for any comments or questions you may have.
Yeah, so I'll start off. Thank you to all of you for that presentation. One I'll go, I'll touch on because we were just, you were just talking about it, Courtney. I'm trying to understand. I thought I understood it and then we're talking about the parking and I'm confused now. So how many spaces are there right now? There's two hundred and four physically on campus, not including street parking. Is that correct? And so the new design would. Continue to have two hundred and four or you're saying it would only be two hundred and four if we include the fifty-seven on-street parking spots? So there's a reduction of parking on campus overall, okay? All right, so now I'm with you. I was excited initially thinking that you guys reduced. The the impervious paved parking area, but it's because you've lost parking spots overall.
So Nathan, Nathan, I want to clarify. And and so I know, Dawn, that. You were, some of your team members met with the building commissioner this morning. To try and clarify the whole parking analysis and this is additional information that will need to be submitted. Because there's two hundred and four parking spaces on the site currently. And the initial application request is requesting reserved parking. Which means that they, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dawn and Courtney. There is enough room to build two hundred, a total of two hundred and four parking spaces if. All the little bits of different places in of green space. Get paved over for parking. So instead of doing that, they want to, you know, be able to. Basically have reserved parking with the understanding that fifty-seven spaces on Main Street. You know, where teachers and and, you know, faculty have parked for decades. They can use those and if, you know, for down the line, there's issues with that. Then the building commissioner can require them to build out the reserved parking, which would be two hundred and four. What I didn't understand and and I and. I don't think it would be productive to try and have an in-depth discussion about the parking until the analysis that. And the discussion with the building commissioner from today is actually, you know, developed and submitted was. The comment that Courtney made that. You are now actually seeking for relief from parking for ten spaces?
For an additional ten spaces over the hundred and seven that we received in nineteen ninety, or I'm sorry, nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay, so is that additional ten spaces? Because the required parking for the campus is going from two oh four to two fourteen?
Based on. Based on the methodology that's outlined in the bylaws, I believe that answer is yes. Courtney, correct me if I'm wrong.
So we are, we're still trying to keep the two hundred and four spaces, so it's not two fourteen, it's still two hundred and four. What we are showing with our with our analysis is based on the relief before, we were actually obviously required to have. Three hundred and twenty-one spaces, but we are requesting relief from a hundred and seventeen. A hundred and seven of those have already been, were granted previously. So there's additional.
So this is, yeah, so this is where I don't, I don't think the board should get into a detailed conversation tonight about the parking. Until the building commissioner has actually confirmed the parking analysis. And what is the total required parking because. In the zoning bylaw, a, you know, the required parking is one space for each. To teach one faculty and one space for every five students. And there have been previously granted special permits granting relief. So, you know, when that calculation is done, those, you know, previous. Relief that has been granted comes off the top and then. He is the one that will have to basically, you know, certify what the required parking is. And then from there, you you move forward with the project and how many spaces there are and what's being requested, so. I just, I just kind of want to lay that out because until the building commissioner has basically agreed to the parking analysis. It's, it's. It doesn't do any good to talk specific numbers. I, I think the board should have a conversation about the. You know, the request to not have to build out all the parking spaces. And the request to be able to have acknowledged that the teachers, you know, and faculty. You know, have historically parked on Main Street and, you know. Have that conversation, but not to get very, not to get specific about the numbers until the building commissioner has. Basically reviewed and agreed to the analysis.
Elizabeth, you are correct. I did meet with the building commissioner this morning. And we revised a document and he will have it in his inbox tomorrow morning. That kind of shows us calculus that we just talked about.
Great.
All right, so we will not, we will not talk about parking for the time being, although I will put one thing in your ears. In terms of design, if you can think about including EV charging stations. In that, in that newer parking lot or any of them, I guess. And any potential shelters that may also include solar panels similar to what you're doing on the roof of the C, the new CAC building. That you're proposing. Just to, just to throw that out, there is an idea, but I'll let others on the board ask some questions or make some comments. Linda, I saw you were trying to say something there.
Well, it's sort of about parking and and I just had a question. Can you make any of the spaces available for. Small cars only and and. Add to your count on campus through that approach is one question. You don't have to answer it now. And then in terms of the, the roadway that you're putting in, is there any opportunity for. Parking that could be parallel. In, in, on your campus, parallel parking. On that roadway, I, there's no way I can tell if it's. Eleven foot or a twenty foot. Swath going through the campus to your parking lot, but I just wondered if if. That was a possibility as well to try and get more, more parking on campus.
Let me just say one thing on parking. So it's, it's a conundrum for the school and it's a balance. It's a balance between green space and pavement. We could show you. A parking reserve plan that would accommodate everything, but it means the loss of green space. And we're trying to trade off. That with existing paved areas along Main Street and through our analysis. Last April, it shows that we're using around fifty percent of those spaces and there's. Additional opportunities for others to use the spaces and they tend to churn, if you will, over the period of the day. So we're trying to be judicious about what we do from a green standpoint and also use some existing resources.
So Linda, to your question on the driveway, I will get feedback from the fire department. I think the current driveway width is probably. At the minimum width acceptable for them when taken into consideration access and snow storage. But I will ask. Thanks.
Sue, Andrew. Oh, Sue, looks like you're gonna are you gonna say something? You're muted.
Thank you. I was muted. Okay, so. I see this as a conundrum on where to put the parking if. The town has sufficient spaces on street that are not being overused. It makes sense not to pave areas on campus, but on the other hand. The taxpayers of Concord pay to maintain on-street spaces, so it seems fair for. Concord Academy to help contribute to that upkeep because of your benefit of not having to pave on campus. But I'm not sure what mechanisms we might have. To do something about that, a one-time payment would obviously be a terrible idea because. You might later want to go and build your reserved parking spaces out for your own reasons. We do have a parking fund. I I don't even want an answer about this tonight. I'm just throwing this out there for. Something that we might want to consider as this rolls out. And my second comment was, I'm pretty happy to see that you're making some good use of the substantial roof of your. Proposed CAC building. I wonder if you've considered using the front part of the roof. To capture rainwater, store it in cisterns for. Groundwater recharge at a slower rate or or for watering of your extensive and lovely looking landscaping. Given that we're seeing heavier rainstorms and followed by droughts. So again, I don't need an answer at this time. I'm just throwing it out there as an idea. Thanks.
Do you want me to respond, Mr. Chairman, or just wait?
I mean, if they you have a response or you guys are already thinking about that.
I would just turn to JP from a landscape plan and what we're trying to do from a sustainability and looking at drought tolerance in the city. JP, you wanna? Talk a little bit about that?
Sure, all all the plants that we propose will be native and. Adapted to local conditions, so requiring less water than most plants, so. In regards to rainwater storage, it's something that we have discussed. It's something that has not yet been determined. But that is definitely another possibility. I believe most of the irrigation for the lawns, which will 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 still happen will. Is comes from the river, I believe, and Dawn, you can correct me if I'm incorrect. And that's only the lawn areas.
Andrew, I think you.
No, I I'm generally in favor of removing parking and and. Making a scramble for parking is fine. There's plenty of parking available most of the time. My my concern is more along the lines of Sue's where we have. Residents who are parking for the library can't because Concord Academy, which is a non-taxpaying institution. Is taking up the spaces and that would be my only concern. With the type of relief we're talking about. That said, I'm sure something can be worked out.
So I just wanna I wanna reiterate what Elizabeth was saying and just we'll table any conversations about. Parking and parking relief.
No, I'm just saying I'm just saying I'm generally in favor of it. That's all.
Linda, it I I seem like you were gonna say, yeah, go ahead.
I I did have a couple of questions and about landscaping and. I I couldn't tell in the drawings, there look like a lot of ghost trees. Would there actually be? Large trees that are being preserved on the landscape or are those just imagined? And will there be any? Kind of. Buffer in terms of the. Potential landscape and and light that's going to be generated. Assuming there will be a lot of evening events at the art center.
JP, you want to talk about the landscape plan a little?
The proposal is currently, we're proposing over a hundred trees, newly planted trees. But yes, it as part of the project where the building is located. And some of the the new paving, trees will be removed and including some trees in the resource area. And so I I don't know the total quantity because not all the trees have been individually located and surveyed, but. There a lot, there's a lot of screening vegetation around the existing. Parking lot and the tennis courts and those will primarily be cleared to allow better. Visual and circulation east-west, visual connections east-west and and for the new building as well. So but we are we are attempting to offset some of those removals by. Naturalizing an athletic field, creating more biodiversity there and also planting new trees.
I'll just as as an aside, it's it is a little difficult to hear that. You're happy to clear cut trees. In one area and but you can't do it if it's for a parking space. But you can for other uses, and so I understand that there's a balance here, but. I'm also hearing that a lot of trees are going to be removed and when you talk about the areas closer to the river. Will you be having that meadow go down to the the? To the water line or will those trees that are there be preserved?
Yes, so the the current project is not proposing any removals along the river's edge. And the new meadow will will be created up to that tree line and not cleared. The only clearing that I'm talking about is outs- actually, most of it is outside the resource area and is around. The current parking lot and the tennis courts. Those are the primary areas of tree removal. That's where the new building will go and that's where approximately the new parking lot will go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members? Anything else? Elizabeth?
Um, one of the issues that still needs to be resolved before moving forward is. The EV battery storage room. And that's something that the applicant will be working with the fire department, CMLP and the building commissioner on. Because it cannot be located on the second floor mezzanine level. So that's that's something that still needs to be worked out. Moving forward. Engineering has, you know, just additional information that needs to be provided as far as the stormwater for them to complete their review. The Board of Health, the Health Director. Has additional information will be needed. There's a little label on the floor plans that talks about. A ticket cafe lounge area. So she's gonna need additional information specifically about how that area is to be used. As we know, we've run into issues with other nonprofit organizations and the. Wish to have different type of catering, which. Requires a whole host of different requirements under the food code and the space that's being shown there. Would not be able to be used for most catering other than prepackaged stuff. So she needs more information on how that space is to be programmed. And. And then to Linda's point, something the town has had to deal with with other. Projects is just the the lighting and light spillover. From the inside out during the evenings and how that will be. How that will be addressed.
On on that note, that actually brings a question I meant to ask earlier. What exactly is the Ides Cottage used for? I know because that's one of the ones that's gonna be moved to the the you know, the edge of the campus.
I I's cottage in its day, the earliest I could find was the nineteen ten census that showed I'd Scottish here. It was the toolhouse, the garden shed, if you will, of what we refer to as opposite as. It is now a one-bedroom, sweet little one-bedroom cottage in the center of our campus. And I think the institutional feeling is if we don't move it during this project, it will stay there forever and be landlocked, so. We want to pick that up and move that over to the western edge.
So so it is for is the residence for.
It's a one-bedroom faculty residence.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
It currently is a residence, Nathan.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, if there are no other comments or questions from the board or Elizabeth, we'll move to public comments. I see we already have. One hand up Suzanne, please go ahead and unmute yourself and introduce yourself again and. Feel free to ask it question.
Hi there, I'm Suzanne Foley. I live at two thirty-five Sudbury Road. I have also been somebody who has tried, has successfully opened up schools in Concord. For example, I opened up a place to grow at two thirty-five Sudbury Road, a place to grow at forty Strawberry Hill Road. Parking was the number one thing which limited the size of whatever I could do. So I'm trying to understand why the Concord Academy would now be allowed to waive their parking requirements, but nobody else in the town is allowed to. By the way, I love the changes that you're doing. I live in the neighborhood. It would be very pretty to have all of that. But if we're guys, are we are now eliminated in the number of parking spots you need? This is one for every per every employee and one for every ten families that join the center. So my businesses were severely restricted because of the parking. So is this something new that we're doing in a cognitive, so I wanted to know why?
So.
Nathan, I can answer that. There's already been two previously granted special permits for Concord Academy. To grant relief to the the standard requirement in the zoning bylaw for the school. Specifically for two reasons. One, the number of faculty that actually live on the campus. And and the number of boarding students that are prohibited from having cars. So those were the the two previously granted special permits for a relief from parking. The to allow a lesser number was those specifically those two factors, which would be different than. You know, another type of school that did not have boarding students or onsite faculty housing.
I hear what you're saying, but we're talking about fifty seven cars parking on Main Street. Is that correct?
I I believe that's the calculation that. That they currently. I I believe that's currently what's been historically happening for, you know, decades.
That's a lot, isn't it? When most childcare centers that want to open in a town, maybe additional four or five. We can't get them, but now Concord Academy can get fifty seven parking spaces? That seems outrageous, doesn't it? It does, let's face it.
I appreciate the comment. I feel like we 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 really need to hold off on. More information from them and. From the town.
If we were called Academy, we might get we might we might get better services from the town of Concord.
Alright, thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Are there any other public comments, questions? Not seeing any. So will we be? Elizabeth, where'd you go? Be continuing this one to.
So I I'm given the amount of information that needs to be submitted and reviewed by staff. I would not expect this to be continued for two weeks. There just isn't enough time for the applicant to submit everything and for town staff to review it. And once again, for me to put that in a report to the board, so. I would ask that the board continue this out to October eleventh.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Is that okay for you, Dawn? Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, it's fine, not an issue at all.
Okay, one second. We have one public comment jumping into the last second. Carol, please go ahead and state your name and address.
All right, this is Carl Savoy sixty-one Belmont Street. I know we don't have the information about parking. I know parking is a hot topic in the village centers. I believe the planning board said the select board was going to do some sort of parking study or. Or look at all the parking and all the village centers. I don't know if they're doing that or not, and if so, is this. Concord Academy proposed parking part of that study?
So what I can provide, there is, I have not heard anything. About the select board moving forward. They were going to have a conversation about parking meters. And and then whether they were going to loop that into some, you know, overall parking conversation. I I have have not heard anything either way, whether they're gonna move forward with that conversation or not.
Okay, and just one other question. On those parking spots on Main Street, are those metered parking? Are they just free parking or how does that work today that we're talking about?
They they are just free parking spaces. They are not metered.
Okay. And there's, is there any time limit or you can just park there all day?
Nope, they're they're unrestricted parking spaces. I believe. The few spaces that are directly adjacent to the front of the library. Are designated as three-hour parking. But everything else, you know, from that point down and across the street. In front of Concord Academy, those are all unrestricted parking spaces.
Okay, and does anybody know generally, are they full all day? Do people like do commuters park there and park their car all day or workers in the general area? Or have any indication of how much availability is there would be for, you know, Concord residents to come and go and. Versus somebody just parking there for eight hours or.
Nathan, is it okay if I respond?
Well, I think we both can. I was just gonna say, living around the corner, driving through there almost every day. Especially towards the Nishank Road end of things, it's they're typically unutilized. Unless there's an event in town, obviously.
In the material that we submitted, we had done in April, five times a week. So workday and three times a day, we did counts of on-campus and off-campus and what utilization rate was. And that factored into our consideration as we made this application.
Okay, you have a rough idea of utilization rate. Is that part of the information you're gonna be providing the planning board?
I believe it's there as part of the application material.
It's already in the application material.
Okay, then can you share that with us? Do you know what it is or?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't.
So I guess the average available was forty-four percent. And that varied from seventy-seven percent being available like a Thursday morning at nine AM. To some of the Tuesday and Thursday afternoons, which had less, but the average is forty-four percent available, but that was very different. Throughout the day, which is in the material.
And and Courtney, that's between I I set hours, I assume. Is that between like eight eight seven AM and five PM? Or something like that, or what's the window?
We did accounts at nine AM, noon and three PM for five days. Uh, yeah, five days in a row.
Purposely did that over April, knowing that we would probably have the most cars there and also purposely excluded the April vacation. So we really got a true reading of what we think the impact is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, otherwise, let's we'll continue this out to October eleventh, is that right? October, yes, October eleventh and let's do seven o'clock.
You can't do seven o'clock. You already did seven o'clock.
That was.
How about seven? Oh, oh, that's the twenty-third. That's right. Okay, so yeah, they get seven. Thank you. How about seven? Oh, oh, that's the twenty third. That's right. Okay, so yeah, they get seven. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I gotta get my screen here. Okay. All right, moving on to what was supposed to be this very aggressive timing on things, the seven thirty uh topic, another ZBA recommendation, Concord Public Schools for a special permit under sections uh four point three point one, six point two point eleven, seven point six, seven point seven and eleven point six to demolish the existing Sanborn Middle School, construct a new middle school uh which includes a height waiver, relief from parking, impervious coverage greater than fifteen percent in the groundwater conservancy district at eight thirty five Old Marlboro Road. All right, who will be uh heading this up for? Uh, okay, I guess it is.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Hi, my name's Steven Ventresco with Mitch Engineering. I'll start it off and um and we have a a group of um other designers here also to help with the presentation and to answer questions. Uh, but just wanted to, as you noted, this is the Concord, New Concord Middle School Project. Um, we're excited to present this to you. It's been a multi-year effort to get to this point. Um, and we certainly um welcome your input. Uh, we've already already received comments from some of the town boards. Um, and we've been coordinating with the town um to get to this point for at least for the past six months. Um, but just wanted to introduce some of the members that are here with us tonight. Um, Peter Martini, he's the OPM or owner's project manager for Hill International. We have um Lorraine Finnegan, she's with SMMA or Sims Manny and McKee Architects. Jen Susie also with SMMA, an architect. Mike Dowhan, he is landscape architect also with SMMA. And we have um Todd Brayton, he's with Brian Associates, um and they're the traffic consultants on his project. And then we have Russ Hughes, he's with um, you may know Russ, he's um Concord Public Schools Facility Director. So with that, I'll share my screen. I'll go through the first couple of slides and then we'll send it over to Mike and then back to me and then end it with Jen, talk about the building, um and then we'll get your input. Um, so Concord Public Schools, I apologize, I'm trying to get to the um.
Bottom right, bottom right or under slideshow.
Bottom right or under slideshow?
Slide show tab on the top. Scroll over three more. There you go, from the beginning.
Lorraine, you're gonna get props tomorrow when we talk about at our meeting tomorrow. Thank you. Um, Concord Middle School Project, um introductions and project goal, just give a quick agenda here. Um, we'll talk about the site and the landscape and as previously mentioned, we're looking for um uh relief from the impervious area under section, section seven six and parking under section seven seven two. Um, and then we're looking for um the waiver for building height under section six to eleven. Uh, project goals, we're looking to replace the two middle schools, the puberty and the existing Sanborn School into one middle school and combined into a sixth through eighth grade with about seven hundred students. Um, this is to enhance the learning process for for the town and the students um to provide a teaching model that will meet the education plan for the town. Um, this will be a single uh building, obviously for um an updated uh new enhanced learning um for the twenty first century. And this project is also looking to be a net zero energy um and to be a fully electric building. I'm gonna turn it over to Mike now. He'll jump into the site and landscape and Mike just brought me with a change of slides, please.
Great, thanks, Steve.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Michael Dowhan, landscape architect with uh with SMMA. I'll start here with the uh with the existing conditions. We're all familiar with the existing conditions, but uh the existing conditions really sort of inform what you're going to see next. Um. The current current school, the current fields both sit up close against the uh against Old Marlboro Road uh in the flat area uh of of the site. Site essentially splits by elevation, so there's the 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 sort of upper flat level that I'm that I'm talking about along Old Marlboro Road, and then there's a lower level uh where there's just some small existing open area right out there through there, yeah, and um you'll see in a moment why we're trying to avoid the lower sort of areas. Um, it's it's sort of twofold. One is, of course, the topography change. And then there's also the proximity, the proximity to to uh to the resource areas down there. So the other important piece is the site, you know, has this this band through the center of it with topography and really beautiful existing vegetation. We spent a lot of time sort of analyzing the site and thinking about the best way to utilize um all the different areas and elements of the site and um. You know, we feel like we sort of uh landed on a site, a location for a for citing the building that really sort of provided us an opportunity to create a real unique sense of place and really uh integrate the 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 building with uh with the site and with nature. And if you want to go on to the next slide, please, Steve. Uh, so that leads us to this next slide, which is the proposed site plan, as you can see, so. You know, it's always, we're we're, it's always difficult. We're taking two uh existing buildings and and putting them into one new building. You know, we're taking all the parking from two buildings and putting them, putting it into one space. So it's always a little bit of a of a of an opportunity to have to really think about the way we want to do that. Um, it's it it could be as simple as just flip flopping the building and the and the and the uh and and the fields, but in 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 this situation, because we had the unique topography and the unique uh vegetation uh on the site that we don't get to see every day, we we started looking at it in slightly different ways. Um, you know, one of the opportunities that we we identified, the town identified really early was this, was this ability to integrate the new building into the landscape in a really meaningful way. You know, there's a really robust site program here um and that really requires some flat areas of, you know, there's gonna be a lot more parking than there is right now. Um, we're creating fields that meet MIAA standards now, so we need, we needed space for that in the in the flat area. So we started looking at ways uh to use this as an opportunity to sort of integrate the building both topographically and into the slope and well, it's, you know, into the nature and vegetation. Um, so I think, you know, in in a few minutes, you're gonna hear from Jen, she's gonna talk a lot more about the building. I don't want to give away too much about the building, but the building is essentially broken into two uh two pieces, you know, um there's the element where that sort of number one is over right now, which is sort of the 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 gym auditorium administrative element where there's less student activity and we purposefully placed that part of the building uh closer to the road and surrounding with with sort of all the uh vehicular circulation, parking, et cetera. Uh, then we, we, what we did was we tried to take, really take advantage of the sort of topographic feature of the site and 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 literally bridge over it and create the classroom wing on the east side of that bill of 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 that bridge. So what that does is it creates an element where uh the part of the building where the students will spend the majority of their day in the classrooms surrounded by uh landscape and green space to the north, to the south, to the east, right? So anytime a student is looking out a window of that classroom wing, they're looking out at green space. They're never looking out at pavement. They're never looking out at parked cars. Um, and that really, we think, presented us with a real, real opportunity to to situate that part of the building where the students are gonna be doing their learning, really situated into the landscape and 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 really kind of marry the building with 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 the uh with the nature around it. Uh, to the south of that classroom wing uh sits the out what we're proposing for outdoor classrooms. Uh, again, just terracing further down into that slope and bringing students out of the building and even closer to the to uh to the natural environment, the trees. Uh, the way the sloping works and the way it's laid out right now is that when students are sitting uh I'm in the outdoor classrooms, they would actually be facing towards the uh towards the woods, towards the forest uh with the teacher standing in front of them. So the idea behind that is that they won't ever have a building as a backdrop. They won't have walls as a backdrop. They won't have parking as a backdrop. They'll only have um the existing vegetation uh and all those mature trees along that slope as a backdrop for their learning. See if you can jump to the next one, if you don't mind. So it's, you know, I love talking about design. I love talking about inspiration uh for our design and everything, but the fact of the matter is that there you know, there are some technical issues involved here. Um, this is a working site. There's a lot of children on this site and 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 their safety is our number one priority. And at certain points of the day, especially, you know, drop off in the morning and pick up in the afternoon, there's a pretty significant number of cars and buses on the site, so we've spent a lot of time uh vetting and developing vehicular circulation systems that you know, really emphasize student safety, we hope. Um, we're also trying to work at the same time simultaneously to sort of mitigate the traffic impacts, especially on Old Marlboro Road, as you know. In the in the current condition, a lot of cars in the afternoon for pickup queue on Old Marlboro Road uh to pick up their their children. We're trying to find ways to mitigate that and get those cars off of Old Marlboro Road uh and onto the site. So there's there's two real conditions uh when it comes to uh pick up and uh and and drop off. So in the morning, it's it's as as you're all aware, it's sort of more like a rolling queue where there's cars and buses entering the site um over a more broad period of time. Uh, so we've developed uh for that condition, this sort of an area for bus drop off. See, if you could just point over to where like buses fourteen through eighteen are labeled right along there. Yeah, so the idea is in the morning, in the morning, where like I mentioned, there's this sort of more of a rolling uh drop off. We feel like there's enough space there for fourteen through eighteen hours to be able to accommodate buses as they come in and depart. It's the same thing with cars in the morning where you see those those powder blue, yeah, one through one through eleven, that's that's sort of like a rolling drop off uh as well for parents in the morning where they come in, they drop off along that queue and they exit exactly how Steve is showing right now through their own their own dedicated, their own dedicated exits so that the buses and the cars are not intermingling um as they exit. Afternoon is a little, always a little trickier. Afternoon's the big time where it's a little more static. All eighteen buses will be onsite at the same time. There'll be a queue of parents waiting to pick up their children as well. So what you see here on the screen is sort of the layout for that static uh afternoon queue. We've found uh room to accommodate all eighteen buses. Uh, you can see that we have eleven pickup spots along the sidewalk, but what we're not, what's not showing on here is the fact that uh as a way to mitigate the uh the offsite impacts, the the traffic on Marlboro Road, what we're proposing is a uh vehicle queue that comes in through that main entrance and queues through that west parking lot. Thank you, Steve. Right there, like that, so we can fit another twenty to twenty one cars uh through that queue as well, so we can get about thirty one cars onto site now, whereas I think in the current condition, uh they they can fit maybe ten or eleven cars on the site. So we're trying to improve it that way as well. Um, this is probably a good time too, right here. I should have mentioned the um I should have mentioned the the uh the open space earlier, but I'll I will mention the parking uh relief now, so. Uh, zoning requires us to have by the this design, zoning requires us to have a hundred, hundred ninety two parking spaces. What we've designed for is a hundred fifty parking spaces and that hundred fifty parking spaces is based on um the requirements of the uh of the faculty and staff the administration gave us. And it's also based on the fact that some of the faculty and staff will be part time, so the part, the 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 thought is that the parking lot won't always uh won't always be filled. And the nice thing about that is because, you know, we're we're looking for relief from the groundwater conservancy district. We're also looking for relief for parking. And in in a lot of ways, that's sort of intermingled, right? Because we're trying to reduce the amount of impervious on the site as best we can by reducing the number of parking spaces to only the ones that are needed by the administration, that cuts out about eleven thousand square feet or about a quarter of an acre of impervious space on the site. And obviously, that helps a lot with the uh with the impervious calculations that we have. Steve, if you can jump to the next one, please. Great, uh and then so thinking ahead to how this is gonna be constructed, it's a, it's a relatively straightforward two-phase uh construction, uh few sub-phases in between, but essentially uh hopefully you can see that sort of green line through the center of the site. Essentially, everything to the southwest of that green line is what we're considering phase, whoops. What we're considering, is what we're considering phase one, and phase one is just going to, you know, um typical stuff, you know, uh tree clearing, uh perimeter fencing, um removal of all uh any existing conditions. And then uh construction of the new building and all the new site elements, that sort of magenta area that you see up at the top right in the northeast, that's also gonna be part of phase one. Uh, so we wanted to be able to give the con, we want to be able to contract as much space as they can in phase one to be able to stockpile, topsoil, common fill, anything that they need to do. So we're gonna take part of the existing parking that sits to the southwest of the building right now and construct a new temporary parking area to the northeast side of the existing building. Uh, during construction in phase one, um faculty and staff will park to the northeast now instead of the uh instead of southwest of the building, and that'll allow us to get a lot more work done. And then, of course, once the building is completed and open and phase two will involve, um, you know, de- demolition of the existing building, uh install of some utilities that Steve will show you in just a minute, and then, of course, the construction of your of your new ball fields. Uh, with that, I'm gonna pass the mic to Steve. He's gonna talk about uh utility infrastructure.
So um utilities, we're upgrading all of the utilities um on the site here, and we'll start with drainage. Um, currently, if you're familiar with the existing Sanborn School, which is shown here. Um, there's very few catch basins or leaching basins on site and any of the stormwater either goes to those basins and it infiltrates there. Um, or it sheets off the existing pavement um into the surrounding landscape. There's no water quality treatment and there's also no um uh or there's no maximizing of the infiltration. Um, and as you may be aware, the Jenny Dugan well is to the south of the the site and it's off the screen here. Um, but it's the next parcel over from from the school parcel. And um what we're trying to do for this new project is to maximize the infiltration in addition to maximizing water quality um for this, for the new school. And so when working with with Mike at SMMA, um, we're proposing sheet flowing um water from um the new parking lots um into water quality units that then spill over into the bio retention systems, which also provide additional water quality treatment and then infiltration from there. And this this will capture the smaller storms, the one inch, one and a half inch storm events, um which is what's considered the water quality storm that we will um treat and then infiltrate. Any storms larger than than those smaller one, one and a half inch storms um will still go to the bio retention systems, but then overflow into this much larger infiltration um system, which is consists of um chambers, which is the new standard that are the standard that um we're using these days for stormwater control and infiltration. And with this system, which also, there's another system just to the south here that picks up the roof runoff from this wing here. What we're looking to do is to maximize infiltration. Um, and our systems are, these two systems are designed to to capture up to the two-year storm event, which is about three point two inches um over twenty four hours, so greatly improving the infiltration um with the new school, um greatly improving water quality um and recharging groundwater. Um, and this has been part of the discussions that we've had with with Alan um at DPW um to try to um look as, look at offsets for, because we are increasing that impervious area. How can we maximize the infiltration and water quality for the new project? So we feel that that this approach is providing that treatment and that infiltration. We're also um as part of the project, installing a new septic system. Um, and so that's in the orange outlined here, and so we would have the tanks and also a denitrification system located here in the loading dock area, and then we would pump the effluent through this force main up to a new septic field in this location here, which is next to the existing um septic fields for the current school. And the reason why we're we're proposing a septic field at this location is because based on a study done in the early two thousands, um there was a groundwater study that was um created that showed the groundwater contours for the site and essentially um the site breaks about here and the groundwater in this area, in this northeast corner flows to the right and top of the page away from the Jenny Dugan well, which is down here. And then the water in this location, the groundwater here flows down towards the wetland and then towards the Jenny Dugan well. So in discussions with the Board of Health and also with Alan at CPW, um this location here was determined to be the ideal location um for the new septic field disposal. Um, and so that's why we're showing it here, and so we're in the process with the Board of Health and also with DEP, we're requesting a flow variance, um and so we have to go through a couple more steps um for that approval, but we're in the middle of that process with DEP right now. Um, in addition to um septic and drainage, we also have new water connections um for fire protection and also for domestic water. And so that's the line that's shown here. That's for fire protection, which goes out to hydrants um located throughout the site. And then And then for domestic water, we're coming off again the the main and old Mar- Marlboro Road um and connecting into the building. Um and this was um discussed with um the Concord Water and Sewer Department. Um we've provided them with with this plan that was provided in the packet to the board. And as I said earlier, we are working through comments, we received some comments from engineering and also from Concord Water and Sewer. And so we're in the process of addressing those comments um and moving the design forward. We're also looking to install a new electric and telecom, again, coming off of Old Marlboro, um and we're coming off of this. Utility pole here and then coming through the site and then connecting to the building. In addition to the loading dock area here, this is really the um, this is the mechanical units here and um this is where the action is or the the heart is for the building. Um and so it's a congested area, but we're, you know, working through with the design team to um. Provide a system or systems that are um connected and um logically laid out. And then with that, we'll turn it over to building design um and Jen can lead us through these slides.
Sure, um I'll just give an overview of um the overall building design and the elevations. Um this here is the ground floor plan, so as we've talked about, the existing site has some pretty aggressive topography, so we're actually. Entering into the building um on the main entrance at what we're calling the ground floor. But um it's actually uh sort of the second floor technically of the building. Um so you enter in through the main entrance, which is identified here with that arrow. Um and then to to the west is sort of the public spaces, um the block of the building. So the pink area you enter directly into um the media center is directly to the south. Um and then the pink area is the administration wing, nurse guidance area. Um and then you walk into the lighter blue area, which is the open dining commons. Which um is an open space that opens into the orange area, which is a four hundred and twenty-seat auditorium. Um and then the blue block directly to the west is um is the gym. The gray area to sort of the southwest. Um what Steve was talking about is that back-loading dock area, so there's a service um area, loading area there. Um so to to the east is a three-story classroom block. Um so again, as I mentioned, we're entering at the ground floor, but there actually is a lower level to this, um and then an upper level. Um so this is the three-story area, whereas the main block to the west is is just two stories. If you want to advance to the next slide, this is showing, this is a view looking at the north side of the building, so this is the side of the building that's facing Old Marlboro Road. Um the main entrance is at the center, um which is identified by an extended canopy. Which leads you to the main entrance, you can see the the what we're calling the bridge element, which. Um connects the public spaces, which is the auditorium. And the gym volume, which you could see to the right, and then the classroom wing. So it's essentially um mostly a masonry building, so it's a combination of some brick and C M U. Um given uh we're. Um it's comprised of various different colors and textures, just to give it some some interest and texture um to the facade. Um there is the bridge element, which is currently planned to be a phenolic, which is a composite material that is um. Designed to have sort of a wood look to give it a lightness. And uh to that particular element. Uh if you want to advance to the next slide, this is a view of the southern portion of the building. So you can start to see here the aggressive topography, how it slopes. Um pretty aggressively towards the back of the building, the classroom wing is on the right side where you can see the three stories. The connecting element where we have various ramps and terracing of the site. To try to connect um the public spaces with the classroom wing and we have various. Outdoor classroom seating areas, which you can see are really trying to take advantage of the southern. Exposure and also just the the elegant, you know, overlooking the beautiful woodland areas to the south. If you want to take, this is a view here of the main entrance, you can see that main entrance canopy. To the left, this tower element is kind of the main stair. Um circulation element um with the elevator tower and this goes all the way up to the roof, this is um which we'll talk about. And minute when we talk about building height, um but this is sort of a an important part of. You know, connecting and also for maintenance reasons, you know, connecting. This um circulation up to the roof level for maintaining the mechanical equipment as well, but also becomes sort of a an architectural feature of the facade. Um this is a view of the southern part of the building, this is actually standing one of the outdoor classrooms looking up. Towards the media center and there's that terrorist element and ramp element to the south. Looking above. So um you know, according to the bylaws. The way we have calculated the base elevation. Um as you know, it's based on uh the lowest foundation. Um as it relates to the existing grades before the building has been built or the site's been touched, so. Because of the aggressive aggressive topography, this really puts our base elevation pretty significantly lower. Um as compared to sort of most of the site here, so our base elevation is. A hundred and eighty foot three and in in perspective. Um our ground elevation where we're entering the building is actually one ninety-seven. Is the elevation, so I've got, um this is all as part of the package, this is a little bit revised since what has been submitted and we can. We'll update this because of further coordination with structure, but the um. The tallest part of the building is that stair tower that I was showing you and um that elevation is two thirty-eight foot three, so based on. You know, the base elevation that was calculated, that puts us at a building head of fifty-eight foot and a half, but if we go to the next slide. Just wanted, we did a a section through the site and this is showing that bridge element, you can see in the background, the stair tower. Um so the calculated base elevation you can see is 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 even below where our lower level elevation is, which is set at one eighty-three. Um and I I also threw in there sort of the street elevation, so the average elevation at Old Marlboro Ray Road is. At actually two oh one, so the stair tower as you're viewing it from the street. Um if we want to look at it that way, you know, we're we're roughly at about thirty-seven feet um above that elevation. So that um we are asking for relief for the height, given the calculations and and even just. You know, based basically the stair tower itself is um even at street elevation is a little bit above the thirty-five foot, but um. That is um. That is our uh presentation on on the overall building height and. And overall project overview, if anyone has any um questions or can open that up.
Sure, thank you to all of you very much for putting that together as a as a as a parent of two kids who. Probably be some of the first ones to use this school, I'm very excited to see uh you know what you've put together. Um so I have a couple of questions uh sort of in order of what you showed. If we could go to the slide that showed um the buses and the parking, uh yeah, yep, that one. So. I've there. As someone who knows about dropping kids off, driving and like ha- having seen it, uh I know it can get very chaotic. I'm a little worried about the uh where you have the buses one through eight, uh you know, basically crisscrossing through where the uh. Uh where the car pickup queue goes through, you have what cars one through eleven, and then you're saying you're gonna have some other. Cars just kind of circling around in in parking lot sixty-two, so my question is. Uh it is parking lot, what's numbered sixty-two, is that really intended mostly for. Parents, people visiting the campus, that sort of thing, and eighty-eight is intended mostly for. Um for teachers, staff and that sort of thing, is that what the idea is?
Uh the one labeled six, so first of all, the labels are simply the uh the parking quantities.
Oh, well, that makes sense.
Right, so the sixty-two spaces there and eighty-eight uh to to the north, so actually the 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 idea is. To have that, we'll we'll call it, we'll call it lot sixty-two now, because I like that. Lot lot sixty-two would be predominantly faculty and staff. And we feel confident that that the the queue through there will work because faculty and staff. Would not be leaving the facility until after all the student students are released. So it made some sense to all of us to be able to uh utilize that as as queuing, since none of those cars in that parking lot. Uh would be trying to exit at the time when the students are are being picked up. So that's why we felt confident with that, um the. What we'll call lot eighty-eight now is the location of um uh E V spaces, um accessible. Parking spaces, um the the special ed van spaces. And we will also secure a few of those spaces for 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 visitor parking to probably the the spaces just to the north of. You probably can't read it, but there's some van spaces labeled on this, Steve, I don't know if you can po- point to them. You see, yeah, there you go, uh just to the north of those, I think the anticipation would be. Uh that those last remaining spaces would be the visitor spaces, so there's a uh an accessible walkway that leads. You can see in in brown, the the brown areas on this plan are sort of all the. Um pedestrian pedestrian routes, yeah, walkways, exactly, so. You know, the the current planning is that those last few spaces um past the van spaces would be visitor parking. Uh so that there would be a direct access for walkways right right into the front of the building, to the main entrance.
Okay, so so thank you, so so knowing that, I I'm wondering if there's a way to somehow. Uh I'm sure you guys went over this so much, so if I'm saying something you guys already thought about, please just tell me to stop. But if there's a way to. Work lot sixty-two uh to to basically isolate it from uh where you now have sort of the car queue. So that the the buses one through eight as shown here would be kind of where the car queue is. And the car queue is basically isolated to. Um that lower bus parking area and and they can still utilize that other parking lot, there's just another tie-in somehow that could be added there. I'm just thinking of a way to not have buses plus. You know, personal vehicles crisscrossing each other potentially at the same time. It's a it's a disaster at Alcott when that happens and uh it it backs everybody up everywhere. Um including the buses. Uh so if there's a way to avoid that, and both both that and just a pedestrian aspect with kids walking around and stuff like that, I think it would be better to keep the buses and everything. In one space and uh parents and and personal vehicles i- in another during those drop off and pickup times. Uh but again, if this is something you guys have already kind of thought about, um I'm sure you have, I I shouldn't say that maybe you did, I'm sure you did. Um uh I'd be curious to hear uh um sort of. If there is another one, we'll think about that, yeah.
Sure, that we'll we'll be, you know, again, this is all a work in progress and obviously we're here to solicit feedback from everyone, we we have looked at quite a few scenarios. At one point, we had all eighteen buses at where you see buses nine through eighteen. And we had them set at an angle so that they would depart much the same way that they do now. There's some concern about the bus fleet, you know, that that works for the existing bus fleet, right, but what about the bus fleet of the future, ten or fifteen years from now, for instance? Will we be in incorporating even more buses, um well, well, you know, what the turning rate of the bus can be, so. So uh at at some point, we decided, you know, rather than trying to get these buses in here at an angle and having them. Have to leave one at a time, queuing, turning hard left as hard as they can. We decided to try to find a way to line up all the buses, you know, from front to back, um so that there's more. That we feel like they can more safe safely queue this way. It did necessitate us bringing the first aid buses over um to the west side. Again, this is still work in progress, I think we'll we'll be happy to keep looking and 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 keep trying to find uh better ways and more importantly, safer ways. To get the students to the buses.
Great, thank you.
Highlight the brown, I want to highlight the the walkways in brown to try to show that. Aside from cars ten and eleven, which I think we're going to eliminate from the queue and just consider them part of the queue, not part of the pickup. There's what we're trying to figure out is accommodate a way that no student would ever have to walk across. Um any traffic in order to get into either a car or a bus, so if you sort of just ignore ten and eleven, which are gonna go away. Those nine cars, that'll be part of the pickup queue, you won't be able to pick up your your student until they get into one of those nine car spots at the front. No student would ever have to cross any vehicle traffic to get into those. And the way we have the walkways for the buses set up, no student would ever have to cross. A roadway where there would be cars or buses in order to to uh to get onto a bus.
And the buses that are leaving, the ones that are one through eight, when they're leaving, are they just going straight across? Uh through that parking lot there, are they making right?
Yeah, they're they're taking a, so when when it's time for the buses to leave. By law, all the traffic has to stop anyway, so yeah, the yeah, the idea is that all of the buses will depart out of that one single dedicated. Uh bus egress, which is the northernmost curve cut.
Okay. Okay, I have another question, but I want to let uh.
Nathan, can I ask before you get off that, I have, um so when buses one through eight go to leave. Are the cars not along the that curb line any longer?
Uh it it depends, I'm not sure. I don't know, I don't know how the queuing is gonna work, I don't know how the timing is going to work yet. I think I see where you're going though, Elizabeth, with the the turning radius, right?
Yeah, so you may want to run the the autocad turning template, because. Um you know, based on this, if if those are, you know, to scale or not to scale, um there's no way a bus could make that turn.
Yep, well, we're continuing to evaluate it, we are.
Appreciate it. I cannot, so let's see, let's see if there's somebody else, I have to scroll over here, let's see, is there anybody else on the board who would like to jump in, question, comment?
Um my only comment was it was very helpful to see the renderings of the rear of the building to get a real sense of how steep the drop off is. Um looking at the topography, you you're kind of like, oh, I get it, and then you see the rear elevation of just. It's all of a sudden, it's two stories, you're like, okay, that makes way more sense now, so I really do appreciate that, thank you.
On that, on that note, I want to say one thing that uh that you've done so far that I really appreciate, you mentioned it early on. Is having the classroom sort of further toward the back with windows. Uh out, you know, overlooking sort of the natural grounds rather than the parking lot, I think that's a that's a fantastic uh decision that was made, so whoever. Whoever moved with that one, uh kudos to you, so thank you. Anybody else on the board, uh Sue, Linda, Mark?
Yes, um I, speaking of uh excessive traffic and difficulty getting around on site, I wonder. What we can do to get children on bicycles onto the site and specifically you haven't addressed the any possible connection to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail.
So we have met with um with the folks from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail a few times now, I'm gonna say at least twice. The issue with it, so there's an existing current connection from the rail trail to the uh to the to the existing school. Um it 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 contemplates students bringing their bikes up that catwalking their bikes up that slope. It's about a forty, I I I don't want to get it wrong, but it's about a forty or fifty foot.
Forty to fifty, yes.
Change, yeah, from the from that upper terrace that we'll call it where the school is now down to where the rail trail is. So it's 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 and it's steep, it's about a one-to-one slope. Uh we.
Even.
Discussions with them about making a connection, there's, if we if we try to create incorporate any improvements, any anything that we tried to do that we we would. Trigger um M A A B, A D A, accessibility compliance issues, so we would. What what we'd essentially be doing is creating a scenario where we'd need to get a switchback ramp up that fifty feet of grade change, so. It's it's unfortunately, just thinking about it for a minute, the the amount of tree removal that would have to happen, just to, you know, to accommodate a a ramp like that. Um so it, we've talked about it, we've discussed it, everybody's in favor, it just doesn't seem like a a feasible element to the project. Everybody's in favor. It just doesn't seem like a a feasible element to the project at this time. It doesn't mean that students still won't be able to use the rail trail and walk their bikes up through the woods like they do now, just to the new building. It just means that we we really can't formally develop a path system for them.
Now, when you're talking about that level of grade, that's even still, it's still that steep even at the extreme north end of the site?
Uh, that's correct. Yeah. Yeah.
I see.
It it it, like Steve and I was, it 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 changes somewhere between forty and fifty feet as you move along that, uh, as you move along the slope.
Right.
It it's the the top of the plateau is approximately here and then it actually comes in and swings around.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Sue. That's a good uh. Mark, Linda?
To ask an off-the-wall question, has any thought been given um? With regard to incremental parking or incremental. Um, waiting of the buses over at the old Peabody site. Um, I mean, obviously that is not contemplated in terms of use for the school, but in terms of um. You know, in initially um, preparing for that as a possible backup if. The um, required spaces are are not granted um, uh, in terms of a reduction. Uh, could um, some of the staff park over at the puberty site?
I I can take that one, Steve. So at this time, at at this time, we don't know what the disposition of the puberty school is going to be. Uh, school district, uh, school committee will more than likely surplus it back to the town. And then we're not exactly sure what will happen to it after that. So we did not take it into consideration in any of our calculations. Because we don't know what it will be used for in the future or what will exist there.
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody does, but I just wondered if there had been any discussions.
Yep, so we did. Thank you.
Can I ask about uh, you mentioned um. A sort of near, again, that that other lower parking spot that there's some, I think you said that there's some mechanicals that will be. Um, just outside the building, yeah, right, right in that area. Are those, so those are. On-ground, surface-level mechanicals that cannot be put to the roof is I I'm guessing.
Correct. That's correct. Yeah, go ahead, Lorraine.
Yeah, I mean, that is basically our equipment location. It's our generator transformers. Um, we're working with the CMLP because this building will um, partner with a concurrent project, which is solar panels on the roof and solar panels on the. In the parking and we have inverters and connectors. So there's, there's just a a whole slew of equipment that needs to go in there and needs to feed right into the building. Or out to the site and putting it on the roof then changes the structure and then also eliminates more of the roof availability for. Solar, which is one of the goals we're trying to balance.
Sure, of course. And do you know what proportion of the roof at this stage will be used for uh? I guess what proportion will be mechanicals or proportion will be uh, solar?
Yeah, Jen, do you wanna, I this rendering is slightly older, but.
It is slightly older. Yeah, but I think for the most part, um, what you see here are these boxes on the roof. Those would be the rooftop mechanical equipment. And I would say probably close to almost eighty percent of the rest of the roof will be covered with PV panels.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. That's good. I know we're going for net zero, so that's great.
The utility farm, Nathan, too, I should mention, has a is proposed to have at least a twelve-foot-high CMU wall. Around it with planting in front of it. And we're also going to manipulate the topography to try to to the the area behind. The wall where the where the utility structures are, we're dropping the grade in there a little bit to 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 gain even more height through there. Uh, so and and planting in front of the wall. So hopefully theoretically, you wouldn't be able to see any of those mechanical. Those ground mechanical units from Old Marlboro Road anyway. The only way you'd see them is if you come into the loading dock area.
Yep, and I I think you mentioned this, kind of hinted at it. So will there also be uh, solar panels on um? Like in the parking lot as well over some of the parking spots as the plan?
Yeah, there'll be canopy-mounted parking um, in the parking lot. We're working with Solar Design Associates, who's contracted with the CMLP. And we're coordinating our landscape design with them to make sure that we're, you know, we're we're working our buyer retention. We're we're paying attention to where it's going to drain. Our power and our lighting, our cameras. So there's a lot of equipment that needs to be mounted on those uh, canopies for the school. So we're teaming up together, just making sure we have proper coordination of our our scopes.
Sure. I I'm excited to hear we're using that, because I think that's a really great opportunity for for, you know. Capture some energy in an otherwise empty parking lot. So, yeah, good. All right, if there are no other questions or comments from anyone on the board, Elizabeth?
Hold on, actually, I just want to ask one more quick question, which is, um, can you show us again the sidewalk along Old Marlboro? Along Marlboro Road? Okay, so it, I was checking to see what the separation is between the sidewalk and the roadway. Because that is the alternative access from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail is beyond the site. To where the rail trail approaches the road shortly, uh, slightly off the top of this image. And if it's an inviting sidewalk, not too close to fast-moving traffic, that would help. Especially if the sidewalk is wide enough to accommodate both a pedestrian lane and a bike lane.
Yeah, so there's a, I I can tell you the existing sidewalk has a a small lawn grass green buffer between the curb. And the walker, the sidewalk is not set against the curb. There's a little bit of green space in between them. Sidewalk go, that that existing sidewalk along Old Marlboro Road is no more than four or five feet wide. Um, at most in in most locations, so.
You would have an opportunity in the second stage, as you tear down the old school, then to um, do something about that sidewalk. Unless it threw off your calculations for pervious pavement or unless it was legally uh, in the street right-of-way and had to be covered by the town of Concord.
If that, it's it's outside of the right-of-way, it would be, that would be outside of the scope of this project. That's correct.
Got it. Thanks.
I have one other question that has to do with the fields. Um, what sort of screening um, is going to be provided along Old Marlboro Road? Or by the school site so that there's um, you know, no soccer balls or. Uh, softballs or ending on people.
Sure.
Walking or driving by?
Well, right now, there is a, we, the only thing we're showing along there is a, is a, is chain link fence. It's very similar to the condition that exists. Today, we tried to set um, home plate for the boys' baseball and the girls' softball. Um, deciding if it was twofold, right? One, to try to create the uh, the right um, solar orientation for the batters. But also to try to pull them as far away from the road um, as we can. We can't, we can't necessarily take the fields and then just. Simply flip them a hundred eighty degrees, um, because then the the sun obviously is in the batter's eyes. Um, so they they sort of, the the alignment sort of has to stay like this, north, northeast or north as much as we can. So uh, with that in mind, we tried to pull them as far away from the road as we can. There are no outfield fences to either the boys' baseball or girls' softball field. Though this is all one continuous open, open green space.
Okay, thanks.
On that, would there be opportunity to shift the uh, the soccer field a little more inward to? I see you have four trees shown as being planted there. I I don't think those are existing uh, trees.
Let let me say that, Steve, I don't know if you can point to it enough, but there's a small retaining wall that, Steve, uh, just to the right of the number four, Steve. See the wall? Yeah, right there. So there's there's a, there's a natural ravine that sits there. It's sort of. If you can picture where the exist, the existing building is now, the existing building is sort of shaped like an H. And in the center of that, thank you, right there, that that's a ravine. So.
Okay.
The the more we pull the building, I guess that would be southeast, the taller. That retaining wall needs to be and the more vegetation we would be removing, right? So every time that build, that wall moves. Moves down, for lack of a better term, the taller it gets, the more trees we have to take out. So we tried to find a balance between. Keeping enough space for the field to have, you know, to have a nice offset off the uh, off the end lines. And also trying to minimize the height of that wall. There's nothing we can do about that. That's just what the natural topography does there.
Yeah.
That's why you only see it in that one small area because of that ravine.
Understood. Thank you. All right. If no other comments from the board, Elizabeth, did you have anything you uh, wanted to add?
Yep, so um, at at this point, um, because of the um. Project will be more than fifteen percent impervious coverage. Um, there is a requirement that the planning board. Um, as well as the Public Works Commission and um, the Board of Health provide. A recommendation to the Board of Appeals. So um, this application will be going to the Public Works Commission's meeting tomorrow night. Um, for them to discuss it and provide their recommendation. Um, and um, they are currently working for um. The engineering division has issues and concerns and questions that the applicant will need to address. Um, I am not sure if, I have not received um, a final confirmation from the building commissioner. As far as the parking analysis, um, and so I'm still waiting on that. The public health director has uh, provided a comment letter. Um, with no uh, significant issues and um, concerns. And um. And let me see. Yeah, other than the additional comments raised um, tonight, I mean, the applicant's still just, you know, working through the process and staff is still. Uh, working through, you know, the information and um. Revised material and information that comes in, uh, everybody will review.
So we will, we will be revisiting this. I appreciate it again for the presentation and all the work you've uh, put into this so far.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I was going to recommend October eleventh, um, Lorraine, but I I think two weeks, I don't think we can. Get the information that, you know, close it out, but um, so we go October eleventh and if for some reason we need to continue again, that would, what's the next one after that is the twenty?
Twenty-fifth.
Fifth, okay. We could be, if we could be continued to October eleventh and if we need to continue again, then we'll we'll let you know.
So Nathan, I don't know if you want um, want to ask for a public comment?
Oh, yes, thank you. Sorry. Yes, if there is anybody who uh, public comment, if anybody would like to make a comment or a question, please use the raised hand hand function. Uh, and I will let you know to unmute yourself. Okay, not seeing any. And we will continue this to October eleventh at uh, we'll say, we already have one at seven, so we'll say seven thirty.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, we are vastly approaching ten PM already. We've done three. Um, ZDA recommendations. So I think um, Elizabeth, can we push? Uh, the is the discussion about the new zoning requirements, MBTA uh, Communities Act zoning requirements. Um, to the twenty. Keep on the twenty-seventh, but it's the twenty twenty, it is the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh, not twenty-third.
Okay, so Heather, Heather, please note that for the minutes.
Yes.
Um, Pittsburgh Turnpike is the the twenty-seventh. Um, yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, I, the board just got my draft memo. Today, um, so it's, it's a lot to digest. Um, so. Um, yeah, you know, push it out two weeks. It's, that's not going to dramatically change anything.
All right, and then unless there is a strong interest to do it. Between now and uh, let's say eleven, to also push the uh, zoning bylaw amendment discussion to the meeting for the twenty-seventh. Since we only have the one Pittsburgh Turnpike on on the twenty-seventh, I'm hopeful that we can actually get through. Uh, some of the things on that day. Is everybody okay with that? Yep, okay. All right, so that leaves the meeting minutes of May tenth. Uh. Thank you to Elizabeth and Heather for sending those around. Uh. I I look back to the screen, I immediately look at you, Sue. I assume everybody has looked at them, but Sue, are there any comments that you have for? For the minutes of uh, May tenth?
Oh, you know, there was a missing period at the end of the sentence, but I don't think it really matters.
Throw them out. They're they're no good. We got to start from scratch then. Um, okay. So otherwise, uh, Nazi, or if there are no other.
Oh, I found the period. I'll correct it.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion for uh, for the meeting, the meeting minutes of May tenth?
I make a motion that we accept the meet, the minute, excuse me, the minutes from the meeting of May tenth as submitted.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, we'll take a vote quickly. I see Linda.
Yes.
Mark?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Andrew?
Yes.
And this is Nathan. I'm also a yes. Uh, so. Period uh, accepted uh, and and we can move on. Are there any uh, planning board liaison, town planner updates? Oh, Linda, yes.
Yes, um, tomorrow night, uh, do not miss the Concord Housing Production Plan Update. It will be, I think, very informative and um, there's a lot of food for thought in terms of. Future actions that might come of interest that might come before the planning board. That's. All I'll say. Is that fair, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and I'll, I'll, that I will add is as you um, review the MBTA Communities Memo. If if you just, because it's a lot, if you have questions, just send me an email um, with your questions. I will reply back um, with the question and my answer to the whole board. So is. Um, y'all might be having the, you know, the same question, but just over the next, you know, two weeks, um, just. If you have questions, just send them along.
Can I ask, I I, this is like a uh, open meeting law question, maybe. Because I know we can't have emails between all of us, um, but if we, I, but I think this probably falls under that. It for something like that, where you're going to have questions, rather than having you have to receive a bunch of different emails and then send out emails. Uh, in response to that, can we have like a shared, like a Google type doc? We can't do that. Okay, you know, it's something like that. Okay. Okay.
So so send send me your questions and I, we will take care of it.
I I'm trying to make it easier.
I have one right off the bat.
What's that?
Um, in in reviewing the the Communities Act, there were basically the impact of not meeting the standard was. You lose the ability to get three sources of funding.
Um, well, um, three sources of funding and then the potential for um. Additional discretionary grant programs.
Right, so so my question was, I I just wanted some details about what Concord's history of. Those types of programs were.
Oh.
I I know some of them, we don't qualify for right now. Regardless, we would have to become something. You know, I know there were certain statuses associated with it, because I, but I know we're not one of them. I was just wondering.
I I I'll look into that.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't know. I was just curious where the stick falls, that's all.
I was just curious where the stick falls, that's all.
Okay.
Okay, I have, we'll give a lightning update from the West Concord Advisory Committee, given the lateness of the hour. I'll just say they're doing a fine job. I've attended their recent meetings, um but there was nothing earth-shattering. I feel I need to pass along tonight.
Oh, one last thing. You're still down a member.
So um you know, if people know anybody and can um get somebody to submit a green card. Or, you know, they might be interested, they, you know, talk to me about it and um but um hopefully. Our select board liaison can pound the pavement and get us our seventh member.
Okay, thanks for the reminder.
Do my best.
Right, that's that's all.
And uh there is nobody else in here. Uh Linda, I don't know if there's anything you wanted to share. Uh select board wise.
Um I would just um note that I'm sure all of you are aware of the conversation that's going on at the select board right now regarding the middle school. So um there's a lot going on on various committees on this topic, so stay tuned.
It's, you know, it's a small project. Very little interest.
Interest, yeah.
And always thanks to all of you um for all the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you, Linda. Um all right, if there there is nobody to give a general comment, unless uh Sue, either of your cats wanna have comments. Um uh I think we can call it a night just before ten PM. I'll take that. Uh thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
Good night.
Best of the week.
Good night.
Um Heather, before you leave, um.